This is Jason Anderson, Chairman of the Killenley Town Council, and we are calling this regular town council meeting to order. It is currently 7:01 PM on Tuesday, January 10th, 2023. Mr. Wood, if you could.
Heavenly Father, we again seek your wisdom and your guidance as we meet together, as we collaborate together. In this room, we are reminded that there's neither Republican or Democrat. We are all servants of this wonderful town. And we just ask that we have that servant's heart and that servant's mind and the wisdom of you. We pray this in your holy precious name. Amen.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For roll call purposes, all council members are in attendance except for Ms. George and Ms. Murphy, who was here and had to step out and will be back shortly. Mr. Kattula is joining us remotely as well. Next item on the agenda, item five, adoption of minutes from previous meetings. Can I get a motion to adopt 5A, special town council meeting, December 6, 2022 minutes? 5B, regular town council meeting, December 13, 2022 minutes? And 5C, special town council meeting, December 20, 2022 minutes?
So moved?
Second.
I get a motion by Ms. Wakefield, seconded by Mr. Wood. Discussion, corrections?
On the regular town council, on page 45, it states that Ms. Teague Barclay noted a correction on page 425, item 4C should be Ms. Zornato is seeking appointment to the Board of Recreation. She was seeking appointment, that was, that would have been 2021, so. Page 45 of the, is it, wait, special town council meeting? Wait, regular meeting, page 45.
And what is the problem?
It says Ms. Teague Barclay noted a correction on page 425, item 4C should be Ms. Zornato is seeking appointment to the Board of Recreation.
That was old.
Yeah, that's old.
Thank you. Any other corrections? All who's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Let the record show that Ms. George is present. Moving on in the agenda, next item up is item six, presentations, proclamations, and declarations. And I believe we have none this evening.
Correct, we have none.
Thank you. When I finally bring glasses so I can read them. Well, we don't have any, we don't have any to read. Next item up is unfinished business for town meeting action. And we have none for that. We'll move on in the agenda. Next item up is citizen statements and petitions. Ms. Gloria, did we have anything submitted?
We have none submitted.
Thank you. At this time, if anyone would like to come up and speak, please step up to the podium and just state your name and address, please.
My name's Fred Jacoby. I live at 23 Raymond Road, Dable, Connecticut. I'm not here as a myself tonight. I'm here, I happen to be president of the Dable Fire District. And I've been before years before in the discussion of the Lake Road Generating Plant, which at this time has exceeded the 20-year agreement that we had with them to give them a special tax rate. And we are here, are asking you folks to consider, next time you talk about this item, that you might also agree with us that enough is enough. We've given them 20 years of a special tax rate. It's kind of hard to explain to the other large companies and that at the industrial park up there, why they get a special tax rate and they don't. And I, 20 years ago, or more than 20 years ago, I signed the original agreement along with the people from the council and that here. And it was agreed to do it for 20 years, only to entice other companies to come into the area and be part of the industrial park and that up there, which we were more than happy to do because it affected everybody, you know, promises of jobs and that. But it's hard, like I said, to explain to other people now, why we've given them 20 years of a special rate, and why aren't they being brought up to pay the same amount that everybody else is? I only ask that you consider this when you happen to discuss it again. That's all. I appreciate it. I thank you very much for your listening.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Kayden Johnass. I live in 16 Samuel Hill Road, Danielson, Connecticut. And I'm from Killenley High School for an American Citizenship class. And I wanted to know some examples for a non-emergency transportation that would require licensing. And I wanted to know some reasons for the deactivation of the electric vehicle charging stations at the town hall. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Gabriella Zink, and I live at 718 Cook Hill Road in Danielson. And I am also here for an American government project. And I was just really hoping to learn more about local government proceedings, which is kind of what we're supposed to be learning about, especially because I'm in the FFA program, and I hope to be an officer next year.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any other public comments? Last call for public comments? Seeing none, we'll move on in the agenda. Next item up is council and staff comments. Any comments from the council?
Jason, I'm just really glad that we had students here again. And that's, you know, it's always good.
I agree.
Hopefully, they keep it up.
I agree. I did come to the Inland Wetlands Water Course Commission meeting last night. There was also a student who came to that meeting. Unfortunately, we didn't have enough members to have a meeting, so we had to cancel the meeting. So unfortunately, I felt bad for her because she came to the meeting on her own time and was unable to participate at all. Any other comments?
To the young man that just wanted to know the difference between a non-emergent transport and things, I think I can speak to this a little, little well. So as we're obviously discussing transfers versus 911. 911 is obviously clearly just that, 911. When 911 is activated, there's an emergency, people are being transferred, transported to the hospital, whether they're sick or injured, or whatever other crises may be happening. A non-emergent transport can be interfacility stuff. So you take somebody from, ambulance might take somebody from a nursing home to a dialysis center, or to their doctor's appointments because they can't walk, things like that. They require oxygen. Another reason, obviously, as we've been discussing here with KP Ambulance at De Kimball Hospital, taking a patient out of De Kimball Hospital because they're having a heart attack or they've had a trauma where they need higher level of care than what local community hospitals can provide, that's kind of the difference there in what we do. So the difference in licensing versus certified, a certified ambulance can always do 911 calls. A licensed ambulance can do 911 calls, but they are also able to take that person from the nursing home or from a hospital to another facility. So that's kind of the major differences between the two. So I figured to give you that example because I've been doing this for almost 12 years now and a manager, so I think I, hopefully, I've kind of got the mindset of this. My boss, my previous boss is sitting in the back, so he'll correct me if I'm wrong later on.
Just to clarify one thing.
Yeah.
I thought the understanding was a certified ambulance could do the transports, they just weren't allowed to bill insurance companies for.
They could, you are correct on that end. It's just that it's about the billing, too, obviously. We provide a service, so obviously, we need to make up for that as well. And a lot of your services around here do have a combination of paid volunteer, or some of them are strictly paid, depending on the company, depending on things like that. And when it comes to government, too, since we're talking government here, towns also do contribute to their local ambulance services as well. Because obviously, you know, when I, when I think about the oath that I took there, I often say, I have my big five things that I'm always willing to support and to pay for, and it's police, fire, EMS, military, and infrastructure. And in the state of Connecticut, with our constitution, actually, education is another thing that we support as well. So that's a, I could really get deep into this, but we don't have all night, unfortunately.
Thank you, Mr. Wood. I just want to speak real quick to the comment, the question that was brought up as far as why we're discussing the deactivation of the EV charging stations. When EV charging stations were first put in, it was put in through a grant, we were required to keep the charging station powered and not bill the users for a certain period of time. That period of time has since lapsed. So at this point, you have whoever's charging their vehicles at the EV electric charging station, they're not having to pay for the electricity. So that electricity is then passed on to all the taxpayers in town. Newer charging stations you can charge for, so you can recuperate your cost of the electricity. That way, you don't have just a few people who are charging their vehicles and all the taxpayers as a whole having to cover the cost of that electricity. Unfortunately, our EV charging station we have, it's a slow charge station, and there's no way to convert it to a pay-for-use station. We are currently looking into the possibility of switching it over to a pay-for-use station, but considering the fact that the electric rates are going up as high as they are, it would just continue to keep passing that on to taxpayers at a higher rate than what it's already been passed on to them. That being said, do we have any other comments? Mr. Kattula, would you like to add anything?
No, I'm all set. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Seeing no further comments, we will move on in the agenda. Next item up is item 10, appointments to boards and commissions. Joshua Bullock is seeking appointment to the Historic District Commission. There are currently two alternate vacancies available. The alternate terms run for three years, and which both run from April 1st, 2022 through March 31st, 2025. Mr. Bullock is interested in being appointed as a regular member of the Historic District Commission. Can I get a motion to appoint Mr. Bullock?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion has been made by Ms. Barclay, seconded by Mr. Wood. Discussion or comments?
Just our general comment that it's very nice to see all of the community members coming out to fill the boards and commissions and with Joshua Bullock owning a historic district home and wanting to renovate it to keep it as a historic home was, and his wife also is very, very nice. So I see him as a very good member of the Historic District.
Thank you. I agree, the fact that he has the background and the experience on doing the restorations on a home in a historic district, that's information I can always pass on as well to others. I also, I think it's great that we have people coming forward, as you had mentioned. My understanding was there was actually a brochure that went out to everyone in the Historic District Commission, and it had mentioned that we had openings. And I think that's a great way to recruit people. We really need to reach out any way we can, find new ways to reach out for members on the boards and commissions. We're always looking for anyone to serve the community.
Just also with him as well, you know, it says that he's interested in being appointed a regular member, but he was willing to be an alternate since that's the only position that's currently open. So, and again, it is good to see that, and that people are willing to come out, step out, as you know, you mentioned even earlier, the Inland Wetland Water Course Commission couldn't meet last night because they didn't have quorum. You know, that's, some of these commissions there, we really need people on because this kind of brings everything to a grinding halt if we don't have quorum for four things. So it's great to see people coming out, and hopefully, we can get more people on some other boards and commissions.
Thank you.
Where Mr. Bullock is, I grew up on that block. I grew up on the other side in another historic home, and there are some beautiful homes over there. So it's nice to see that someone has purchased one of those and is interested in not only refurbishing their own home, but getting involved in finding out more and helping other people who may choose to move to Killenley and buy one of those, they'll have the support of actual people that are living in those. It's not just people coming and, you know, serving on the board, but they're actually invested, so it's nice to see that.
I agree. Thank you. Any further comments? Seeing none, all who's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion? We have one abstention, that was Ms. Murphy. Moving on in the agenda, the next item up is 12, no, getting ahead of myself, 10B. Kevin Thompson is seeking appointment to the KB Ambulance Board. There is currently one regular board member vacancy available. The regular term runs for two years. The available term would run as follows, from May 1st, 2022 through April 30th, 2024. Mr. Thompson is interested in being appointed as the regular member of the KB Ambulance Board. Can I get a motion to appoint him?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Motion has been made by Ms. Barclay, seconded by Mr. Wood. Discussion?
I think Kevin, having known him personally for a number of years, will be a great addition to that board. He's got a lot of financial, as well as administrative experiences, so he'll be a good addition to that board.
Thank you. Any other comments? Seeing none, all who's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. We'll now move on in the agenda. Next item up is reports from liaisons. 11A is Board of Education Liaison, which I do not believe we have this evening. Moving on to 11B, Borough Council Liaison.
That would be me. Hey, so our sidewalk litigation case was finally settled for an amount considerably less than they expected, which is good. Our charter revision started, and we actually ended up with an extra person from the borough that actually came in and wanted to be part of that, the charter revision board, so that was even good. So hopefully, we'll have more, kind of like that whole send out the flyers for the Historic District, so hopefully, you know, we'll get some more input for the borough. The, apparently, one of the engine trucks were damaged at a South Killenley Fire, which happens. And Ellis Tech is actually going to help us redo one of the signs for the fire station as well. So there's a lot of, there's actually quite a bit of money for facades for any of the businesses in town, in the borough that are interested. Our web design is proceeding. Our HVAC improvements are moving along, as well as the fire, our new fire truck has been ordered. So, of course, that's got a heck of a lead time, just like an ambulance and everything else that we have in today's day and age. But other than that, the borough is moving along.
Do you know approximately what the lead time is on that, two, two and a half years?
Oh, it's, 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 it's got a good, it's got a good year, at least.
Not as bad as I expected.
Yeah.
Would anyone like to comment on it? Moving on in the agenda, we'll move on to item 12A, discussion and acceptance of monthly budget reports. Can I get a motion to accept the summary report on general funds appropriations for town government?
So moved.
Motion has been made by Mr. Barkley, Mr. Grandalsky, seconded by Ms. Barclay. Getting ahead of myself. Questions, comments, discussion? I believe Mr. Grandalsky had his hand up first. Is your mic on? Microphone?
What are, what are we looking at? Is this the regular budget that Mary's proposing?
Yes, this is the regular monthly budget.
So I had a couple of questions, Mary. Could you tell me about the stabilization grant? I see that it's like high, a couple hundred thousand.
Yep, that's the, that's a state grant that we receive, the municipal, so that's kind of changed iterations over the years. The state, years back, had done a statewide exemption for manufacturing machinery and equipment. Through legislative action over the years, they slowly defunded that with pushback from the municipalities. The state enacted different iterations of that grant to hold harmless the municipalities. This is their current name for it, Municipal Stabilization Grant, and it basically holds the funding level to the municipalities the same as what it had been in the previous funding cycle.
Okay, so it just came in a little higher than budget?
Yeah, so they give us early indications, and we pass our budget based on essentially the governor's budget that gets issued. Legislation, legislative, the legislative body wraps up their legislative cycle in June, we act on our budget in May. So that can change.
Okay. No, I just wanted to know what it was. And I had one other question about the capital outlay. Like, when I look at the expenditures, I see several that were budgeted high, and we haven't spent any money. Is that just a springtime thing?
Yeah, so capital outlay, a lot of what you're seeing capital outlay is actually our contribution to the Capital Nonrecurring Fund, which is a one-time transfer that we make. And that typically happens in the spring that we do that. It's a journal entry transaction to transfer those funds into the Capital Nonrecurring Fund for the eventual replacement of equipment, based on that equipment scheduling.
Okay, so we see that later.
Yes, you'll see that later.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Grandalsky.
On the, I don't know where this might show up, but the Box Culvert Study.
That was in capital.
Okay.
So that's not going to reflect in this operating budget. That's the, that's a capital expenditure.
That's a cap, would be under the Capital Projects Fund, or where does?
It's in the Capital Projects Fund. So this is just the general government budget that you see here. The Capital Projects Budget, we, we budgeted, I want to say 40 or 50,000 for the Box Culvert Study. So they are, they've, I believe they've completed the actual visual inspection portion of that. We are awaiting the report on that.
Okay, so we haven't paid that amount yet?
We've paid portions of it, as we've gone through the, you know, as you go through the, the, the study, we've paid pieces of it, but we haven't, because we haven't finalized that study yet, we haven't fully expended that.
The reason I'm bringing that up is the, you know, because I guess we're looking out for bids for Academy Street and the Brickyard Project, and I want to make sure that all that's.
Reynolds Street.
Oh, Reynolds, okay.
Not Academy. I'm like, Academy, what am I doing on Academy?
Yeah, okay.
Reynolds Street, yes. And so that is going to definitely, so we are trying, we are looking to get the results from that evaluation and that study to be able to fold into the design phases, because both of those, the Brickyard Project and the Reynolds Street Project, we are going out to bid for design phases, and we need that information to fold into the design phases.
Yeah, that's, that's what I said, just.
So it's key, yes.
Okay. But where would, so if you're looking on the sheet of expenditures, where would that?
So you're not going to see, because this is general fund, this is not capital project. Capital project is a separate fund, and your capital project expenditures do not reflect on here because that's, that's a separate fund. This is general fund, and this is what is funded through mill rate.
Because I was trying to look for it, and I says, well, I'll take a stab at it.
Right. So this is what your general annual operating budget is. That's what we reflect here on a, on a monthly basis, is the operating budget.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? Seeing none, all who's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. We'll now move on to item 12B, discussion and acceptance of monthly budget reports. Can I get a motion to adopt the system object based on adjusted budget for the Board of Education?
I'll make that motion.
Motion has been made by Ms. George.
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Wood. Is there any discussion, questions? I know we don't have a Board of Ed Liaison here from the Board of Ed. However, any questions, we can always have our Board of Ed Liaison from the council present those to the Board of Ed at the next meeting.
That's tomorrow night, and I can also ask when they're going to send somebody.
If you could, that would be great.
I was going to say, is there any way we can compel them to come? Because it's kind of, it's disheartening that we're, you know, Ms. George is always at the Board of Ed meetings, but we don't have anybody coming here.
I can be very convincing.
I appreciate you.
I believe that.
Jason?
Yes.
So, so looking at their system object, and we're, several months before, we're at the end of theirs, and multiple of their accounts are at 100% or higher. Like, their workman's comp is at like 100% expended. Their insurances are at almost 80%. Their heating energy is 211, which that's understandable. So, and then their computer hardware, which I expect if you're buying a computer, that's it, you know? But they've got several accounts that are 50% or higher, and.
So with the insurance, I may be able to answer that. When looking at their report, it appears that they're reflecting not just what they've expended, but also what they've encumbered. So they know from the very, like with the insurance, we know what our premiums are going to be for the whole year, so they've encumbered the full amount, which means they're reflecting all of what they're going to have to expend for the entire year as what they've expended, plus what they know they're going to have to expend for the next two quarters, for the next two bills. So they're showing their, what they've expended out the door, plus what they've encumbered for the next two bills, because we get that, we know what that is when we come into the fiscal year. So I think that's what you're seeing for, at least for the workers' comp insurance and those insurance ones, because I understand how Karma bills, and that is what it looks like, that I know what their premium is, that's what it appears to be. On that, the other ones, I think you probably would need to ask those questions, but.
So, so, sorry, Mary, is that something like an expenditure not paid for in this period, but it's carrying over?
Yeah, so think of it as a bill that's coming, that's going to be coming due. They know it's going to be coming due, it'll be coming due in a future period, they haven't paid it yet. So they encumber it, because they know they're going to have to pay it, and they know what the value of that bill is.
Is it also possible that the payment goes out either every other quarter or once a year?
Karma goes out quarterly.
Okay.
Karma bills quarterly, and they, you know, they send you the bill in July, and they show you what all four quarters are going to be. So you can set that up in your system, so you know exactly how much your quarterly payments are going to be. And that's what it looks like they've set up in their system, is that they put in all four, they put in all four payments, and as the payments come due and they issue the checks for them, it'll reduce the encumbered amount and move it over to the expended amount, but the total, it'll still reflect as almost 100% expended on that line.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? Ms. George, if you could, just ask them those questions for us. Thank you. All right. Seeing none, all who's in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Next item up is 13A, Correspondence Communications Reports, the Town Manager's Report. Ms. Gloria, if you could.
Sure. So I just wanted to give you an update on some of the ARPA projects that had been approved and how they're moving.
and how they're moving forward. The fire departments, um, there was, uh, the communication mobile units have been ordered, and, um, we are communicating with the state. There is a fairly long lead time on us receiving them and having them programmed on the, programmed by the state, but we're working with the state on those and, um, working on, um, any agreements that need to be made with the state in order for those to be implemented out to the fire departments. The Lucas Tools have been received, and you can see the picture that we got taken of, uh, the chairman and the vice chair delivering those units to the fire departments, and the departments were very grateful to receive these units. The WPCA, the Reynolds Street Sewer Replacement Project, um, we have issued an RFP for engineering services for this, that's gone out to bid, um, and we received the bids in December for that. We have awarded that, um, engineering to CLA engineers, um, and so they're going to be working on the design and bringing that project through, um, bid for construction and into construction. So, um, we've started the design phase on this. We will be having several meetings with, um, stakeholders in this area that, you know, have, um, uh, priority concerns around the use of Reynolds Street, meaning, um, the, um, the church, the funeral home, the fire department, to better understand impacts as we look at, um, any improvements that we're going to be trying to do for parking along that, um, along the park portion of that property, and also as we can coordinate, um, the actual construction phase of Reynolds Street, because it is going to be about a four-month construction process, which is really going to be very impactful on that roadway. So we want to make sure that we're taking into account any of those high-traffic stakeholders in that area as we're trying to move into construction. We'll be looking to go into construction, um, early summer, so we can get through, uh, the construction phase, this construction cycle. We are in communications with Connecticut Water to see if we can get Connecticut Water to do the water main this construction cycle as well, as opposed to having us do all of this work and then have them come in and do water main next year, next construction, you know, the following construction cycle. It just means the road, we wouldn't do permanent paving this year, we would leave it as temporary pavement, but it means the road gets, there's a lot more disruption in the area for two consecutive construction cycles. So we're trying to see if we can get that timed out. It's unclear yet if we're going to be able to get that coordinated with Connecticut Water, but we're, we're trying to work through that component. We have been in coordination with KB, uh, KBA with regards to their, um, larger events that they hold at Davis Park, because like their second Saturdays, they typically try and close Reynolds Street and utilize that for vendors. That's going to be unavailable, um, for this construction cycle. So, um, we're likely going to be ho, um, having them, um, move their events to Owen Bell as an alternative location for, uh, during this construction cycle. Economic development, um, we had Fasen O'Neill completed the Phase One and Phase Two Environmental for the one twenty-five Alexander Parkway. We did test pits and borings at various locations on that site for soil testing and also to determine, we know that there is buried car parts, um, in a section of that property, and we were trying to identify, you know, to what extent, um, there's pollutants in that, in that soil. There ended up being two areas of concern. The first area is approximately about five thousand square feet of, um, that contains old car parts. The good news is that we really didn't find any petroleum contamination, petroleum product contamination in the soils that we tested through there. So, um, we've determined that likely those cars, when they were buried, were already drained and, essentially drained and cleaned to fluids before they were disposed of over there. So it's a matter of removing the old metals that are in the ground, which is, um, a lesser remediation, but still, um... So we are, um, and there was one, one area of concern that did have, um, that did have a, um, a small, uh, small, um, a minor elevation of petroleum, likely attributable to some potentially old asphalt that might have been turned up into the soil at some point in time. It was very small and contained, um, so they really didn't feel that, um, Fasen O'Neill didn't feel that that was necessarily a widespread issue throughout the entire property. They felt it was a very contained location. So for the removal of the, and remediation with regards to the car debris, it does require a fair amount of tree cutting and stumping that would have to occur for those trees to be removed. So we are going out to bid for tree removal, um, and the stumping, see what those costs are, if we're able to, um, get the tree removal completed, and then we will get a better understanding. We'll be able to go out to bid for what the actual removal of that car debris is going to be, um, and then we can likely look to apply for grants for the final step of remediation, which is the removal of the cars, um, of the, of that metal debris. Again, as you go into any of these sites, as they start digging through, there's always the possibility that there's things that are underneath that, even though we, we went down, I think, I think some of the borings went down twenty feet or, or so, um, there may be stuff that they just, uh, didn't catch when they were down there. But it seemed relatively, um, low risk, so that was positive. Police administration location, we're going through our due diligence phase, um, we are doing, uh, water quality testing. Fasen O'Neill will complete the Phase One environmental assessment, um, and we are coordinating with property owners for inspections of the mechanical systems on that property. And, um, we are aware of legal action on that part property, and we are working with our legal team around that. It doesn't involve the town, it involves property owners and whether or not there's clear title for sale. But we believe that it will still, that there will be a path forward on that. But just know that we are, um, aware of legal action with regards to the property owners, and, um, uh, we have, uh, started evaluating that. But again, that's something that has to be resolved on the property owner's side for marketable title. Economic development, just wanted to give you an update with regards to the, um, we submitted for a Brownsfield grant application for multi-purpose grand Brownsfield Grant Fund. This is, uh, environmental assessments, feasibility, market studies, and cleanup funds. We are targeting the Old Borough Treatment Plant Facility, so years back when we were trying, when we were doing the facility upgrade, Ed, you'll be very familiar with this conversation. We had tried to incorporate the demolition remediation of that site in the wastewater treatment facility plan upgrade that we did at the site, at the plant. It ended up not being eligible under those grant funds, and so we still have the old wastewater treatment plant facility out there. So we are looking to, um, see if we can get funds to do, um, environmental assessments of that, and then also look to see if we can get demolition and cleanup funds for that site. That would really be able to activate a fair amount of space really adjacent to those, um, recreation fields that the town could, um, reactivate in another way. The other site that we're targeting with this one is the Blueville Mill Site. This is one of our, one of our last remaining standing mill sites. It's vacant at the moment, we've been working with property owner. We previously received grant funds to do, um, a Phase One environmental assessment on this one. So this next step in the, in the assessments will, um, uh, help complete the picture of what the environmental picture is for the Blueville Mill, which makes it, um, a clearer picture for developers to come in and potentially develop that. So it makes it easier to market the property. We have had, uh, some interest from developers with that property, so we're hoping that if we can get those questions answered through this grant process, then, um, we will be able to, um, help those, uh, it's really about the developers being able to get their funding stacks for a property like that. EPA has re-engaged with PRIM Corporation and the current property owner, PRIM Mill, evaluating the needs and assessments for that site and trying to identify a path forward on those areas of concern. So EPA is taking the, um, lead role in this, um, for path forward on this. And, uh, they've been in communication with the town with regards to the town's concerns as well. So we've been coordinating with EPA on, um, responses to PRIM Mill at this point. I did want to give, um, a, a shout out to our Killingley Business Association, and also Jill Sinclair, she helped with this. They planted eight hundred daffodil bulbs around town. It's just, it, this was their, this was Killingley Business Association's beautification committee. So they worked with our, um, with our Parks Department in determining locations, and they really picked where all of our welcome to Killingley signs are, um, at Owen Bell Park, over in front of porings and passages. So when, in the spring, when those daffodils bulbs come up, um, you know, you know where they came from. The Business Association, um, worked really hard on getting those planted, as, as did Jill. I did incorporate in your meeting, uh, your package, a draft schedule for budget meetings. We're getting ready to hit that time of the year again. So here's the scary list of all of our meetings, um, slayed off the month of April, right? But, um, April first, we start on, I have it starting on Saturday, which is... So I followed the historical pattern for all of our meeting dates. I will be coordinating with the school for the, um, for the, uh, public hearing, which is typically the second Thursday in April. That does happen to be their school vacation week, um, but, you know, we've, we've held it there in the past, so we will, um, coordinate with them on that. If there's anything that, um, comes up, I will be reporting that out to you, but the council will be, will be, I will be looking to put an item on your agenda either next month for February or for March, for you to formally set the dates for the public hearing and the budget referendums. Those are the two, those are the dates that you formally set by, um, action. All the other ones are, um, are just noticed by, by posting the agendas, and also the annual town meeting is by charter, so you don't actually formally post a notice on that. Legislative session, I gave you a nice, um, book that got issued by State Office of Legislative Research, and this was what they considered their major issues report, um, which identified what the state identifies as their priorities coming into this legislative session. I will send you the links to this, and I apologize, I didn't send it to you earlier. I will send you the link to this because all of the, there's a lot of links that you can drill into and get more information and go to specific bills. So you can go through all of those. CCM, um, has just recently, um, will be issuing their legislative agenda. COS has their annual meeting tomorrow morning to issue their legislative agenda too. So that, those two groups are really the advocacy groups for all the towns. And really what is the municipals', municipalities' goals for the legislative sessions in, um, legislative changes, modifications, or combating, you know, potentially some of the proposals that you see here before you. So, um, NICOG is also holding a special meeting this Friday to go, to discuss what the Council of Governments legislative goals are going to be for this legislative cycle. So, um, everybody's trying to align their priorities for legislative. This morning, I was actually up at Hartford to have, um, with CCM, to do, have a legislative breakfast with, um, the legislatures to really just kind of have a meet and greet, um, to talk to them and, you know, start talking about, you know, pros and cons. One of the big topics was housing, right? And we heard a lot from the legislatures that they really want it to remain in local control. So it was really positive to hear that, um, and it was really positive to hear that they want to hear from the municipalities about how they can support the municipalities in getting housing, because we all understand that we need housing, we're, everybody's short on housing. We need places for people to live, but they want it to be driven by the municipalities. So that was very positive, and we heard that from all sides of the fence. So, um, so that was really positive in that conversation. And then I did give you a law enforcement update, because I was very delinquent in getting that to you, and I apologize for that. So first off, I do want to, um, recognize, um, we onboarded our seventh sworn officer. Officer Michael Bouchard joined us right after Thanksgiving, so he is completing his, um, field training. So he's doing his FTO process right now, and he is working through that process. I am in the hiring process for our eighth officer, and hopefully we'll be able to onboard that officer, probably the end of February, beginning of March. Some of the, some of the appointment, we have to do a lot of, um, outside appointments for testing, and those are, um, kind of delaying out at this point in time. So, um, it might not be until the beginning of March that we're able to onboard. I gave you the quarterly report for calls for service by the quarter, and I kind of, I've expanded it now instead of just doing one year, I've tried, I'm trying to give you guys a, um, kind of a multi-year look at, um, what our calls for service are. And I did also expand, um, there's a lot of, in the call statistics, I get a breakdown of our call statistics. So the next chart is about call statistics, but a lot of them, the, the bulk of the calls that they get to are what is called, um, for the state police as well as our, our own employees, are, as well as Killingley PD. A lot of them are considered non-reportable matters, which means they responded, but they don't necessarily have to write a full-on report for it, it's not a reportable matter. These are the statistics for the reportable matters, right? So I wanted to give you just kind of a, an understanding. Our, our staff takes the bulk of the accidents that occur locally. We are taking, um, a fair amount of investigations and know that investigations can take a fair amount of resource in getting all the way through an investigation. So, um, they do, um, we are taking a fair amount of the investigations of the little over eleven hundred investigations throughout the year. Our staff managed almost four hundred and fifty of those, which, you know, given that the bulk of those investigations are done largely by, you know, four to five staff members, because we have, one of our officers is an SRO, and he's not necessarily pulling a lot of the, he does pull some calls, but he's not pulling a lot of these investigations. They're largely falling on, um, the remaining group. It's a fair amount of investigations that are occurring with our staff. We've advertised for the armed security officer positions. We actually have our first interview date scheduled for the seventeenth. So we'll be beginning our interview process on the seventeenth for those. And I did include to you a draft of the budget that I shared with the superintendent for the current fiscal year for ASO positions, as well as what we are projecting for next year for ASO positions for the division. So, um, we've shared that with the, with the superintendent. We'll be meeting on that again to kind of go over, um, and review what those, what those costs are and review those concerns, but I think we're pretty tight on what that, what that budget includes. And that reflects the five positions that the Board of Ed currently has approved. If the Board of Ed decides to modify that or change that, those numbers change. So I wanted to, you know, provide that information to you as well. And then I've provided, um, some of the meetings that I've attended.
Thank you. Mr. Grandowski, go ahead.
On the economic development update, on the Blueville Mill, is that going to be, um, projected for affordable housing?
Well, it really depends on the developer. Yeah, it really depends on the developer. I, you know, that, the use of that property, housing is, is one of the higher uses, whether it's affordable or market rate, is really going to depend on the developer and what their, um, what their funding sources drive it to be.
Because I'm hearing a lot about affordable housing, it's, it's just.
Yeah, so, so one thing that, you know, affordable housing, um, you know, I think there's some negative connotations around affordable housing, but there's, um, one of the things that we're really lacking is entry-level housing. Our entry-level housing in this area has essentially dried up and gone away. All of those, they're completely priced out now. We, we see mobile homes that are going for two hundred thousand dollars, which they would go for fifty thousand before, right? So your entry-level housing is almost nonexistent, which is really leaving a, a large void. And that's an area that we really need to target, because we have, we still have a large, we have a population that are in, that are entering into workforces, that are starting workforces or in entry-level positions, that they need stable housing, and having, um, entry-level housing is, is important for a community to still have. So, um, we need to make sure that we're having, um, you know, housing... So we need to make sure that we're having, you know, housing that meets all of our demographic. So what that looks like, it's going to depend on the developer, you know, whether, and it's going to, and largely that's driven by what their financial stack demands are, you know, it depends on what they're, what they're getting for financing incentive. They may have a requirement to have some level of affordable housing, because that's the current term for affordable housing, in, involved in that, but it really will depend on the developer. So this really, what we're doing right now is really getting it to a place where developers will, will be able to feel comfortable in putting numbers together for the property and potentially look at developing the property. Right now, there's too many question marks with the property, right? There's too many question marks, and so a developer doesn't want to throw their hat in the ring on it, because there's just too many questions. The more questions that we can get answered on this one, the developer will, a developer will hopefully look at proceeding with the, with that project. And ideally, you know, this one, it's still standing and it's still in relatively good shape. We would like to hopefully get this one moved before it really starts to get impacted by elements.
See, because it seems like I'm seeing in some of the articles in the newspapers, affordable housing.
Yeah, there is a big.
Changing the zoning laws or whatever else is going on, I don't quite understand.
Yeah, that's at the state level, there's a lot of push for, and that was a lot of the conversation last year around housing. This year, there was a lot of conversation at legislation, or thought around legislation moving into doing a specific, mandating.
That's what I'm, okay, that's, that's what I'm, okay.
And, and after having the conversation today and, and talking to, you know, the, you know, the how, the speakers and, and the, you know, the majority representatives and, and both sides of the fence, really, what we heard echoed over and over is that they want it to remain local controlled. They, they don't want it mandated. They don't feel that mandate is the way to go, but they, and they want municipal input in, how can they help towns achieve growth in their housing stock? And so, so I think that was positive, that was, that was definitely a positive conversation and very different from some of that, you know, we're going to beat you over the head with a club, mandate words, right? We didn't hear that. So that was really positive.
Okay, because that was a big thing that it seemed like.
It was. And last year was really.
Yeah, and I, that's what I said, affordable housing and mandate, you know, putting mandates on, or maybe they could dangle some funds, then it's a whole different ballgame, too. I don't know how that's going to go, but, okay.
Yeah, so I think it was really receptive, and the governor even has mentioned, in, has, in two of his speeches, has said that he supports local-controlled housing.
Okay.
So I think that that's, that's, that's positive.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, last year, there was that one specific group I had spoken about, Desegregate Connecticut. There was a huge push for them to, they wanted to remove municipal control and put it in the state hands, but there were so many people and municipalities that jumped on and said, no, we won't. So they got some stuff through, but not as much as they want. And now more people are aware, so we can fight back.
I actually was, at the legislature today, I was actually talking to the chair, the chairperson of the Housing Committee, and we were talking about local control and the need for local control. She was very, very supportive of that, but also the need for bringing in entry-level housing and understanding what has been, what has driven out the, our entry-level housing and why, why has that driven up, why has that dried up? And so it was a really great exchange. She was, she was, Senator Moore, she was very, very interested in understanding all of that information, and, you know, I think that she is very willing to listen and hear and take in the local information from, from municipalities, so it was positive.
Seeing like some of the news articles that I was, were going the other way, they weren't amazing, but it was like, in the back of my mind, I'm sitting there, whoa.
And that's why we watch it really closely. That's why I become, that's why I am, I am so involved in CCM and in COST as two advocacy groups, because it gets us the opportunity to have those direct conversations with legislatures that are passing these bills. We can get onto conference calls and we can, you know, have those direct conversations, and, and the louder we can have voice, the better. So doesn't always change it, but, you know, I think it does, it can be very impactful.
Yeah, along, along that same lines, Jeff Gordon, now Senator Gordon, he, it made no sense to put affordable housing in Woodstock. It really, I mean, how do you get, how do they get to the grocery store? How do they get to any location? I mean, Woodstock is not a walkable place to get to where you need to get to, and that's what you need with affordable housing. You need to be able to get to wherever you need to get to. And, and, and ultimately, I mean, that's why Plainfield, Killenly, Plutnum, and Thompson have all the affordable housing, because it's a walkable, it's a walkable location. I mean, and you, it has to be walkable, and that's part of community health, and that's what makes a healthy community, is you got to be able to, be able to walk to get to wherever you need to get to, so.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Mr. Kudula.
Thanks. Mary, I heard you mention about the interviews for the ASO positions. How many of those, how many applicants have you gotten for those positions?
Currently, we've received three applications, at the, three have submitted for those at this point in time.
Okay. I wasn't going to comment on Mamie's picture, but he doesn't have very good picture-taking skills, does he?
He tries his best.
Yeah, he tries.
I don't know if you heard his comment at that meeting, but that, his comment would explain that picture. Mr. Grandowski.
On the armed security officers, so we had the memo of understanding, but does the Board of Ed understand that, the numbers, do they, you know, that's the part that, there was no numbers in that document.
Right, so that document outlined the Board of Education's responsibility to reimburse the town for all expenditures related to the ASO program. And so there, you know, they, they, they approved that MOU, they approved and, and agreed that they, that the Board of Education would, would cover all costs associated with the ASO. I submitted that budget to the superintendent, I'm sure he will share that with the Board of Education. I've heard numbers floated out by Board of Education members, which are fairly close in line with what I have projected for next year's budget for the ASO. So I don't know that what I present, what that, what they're going to receive is going to be all that unfamiliar to them or, you know, surprising to them. But the, the MOU, really, just like with our, with our, with our memorandum of understanding for the, for the School Resource Officer, for our SRO, that agreement also doesn't have dollar figures in it as well, it just outlines the responsibilities of both parties. And it outlines their financial responsibility for payment for the services.
Because I can see it if we budget, like next year, when they're budgeting for it, but this year, we're in the middle, and where is the, where is that money in their budget? This is a, you know, midterm, you know, so I guess there's, looking at the, what the, the superintendent's report was, there's monies, I guess there's monies available, but I want to make sure that that's, they agreed, you know, it's a tough go.
I have a question, looking at this real quick, Mary. So why does it jump so much in one year from 23 to 24?
So for two reasons. One, the 22, 23 year is only a partial year. And number two, 23, so there is also in 23 some initial startup costs, so you'll notice that the operating supplies is substantially higher in 23 versus in 24. We have a lot of equipment that we have to purchase, that is a one-time purchase item that has to happen in 23 that we don't have to repeat in 24, but we do need ongoing operational. But largely, what you're seeing the difference is, is with regards to the actual, the actual salaries, and that's because it's a partial year.
Mary, on the radios for the MS.
Yep.
You said there's a long lead time. Do we have like a forecast of lead time on that?
Yeah, I want to say that we're looking at somewhere close to a year.
With the ASOs, when, with the posting, I know that you had mentioned, I don't remember exactly the specifics of it, but there's a specific training that they have to do.
Yes.
Was that part of the posting, or is that to be completed?
Right, so that is, it would be to be completed, or, you know, preferable if they have it, so it's not a requirement in order for them to be able to submit for it. I did have a conversation with Mike Kaplet, which is our Region 4 Demos manager, with regards to that specific training, and he indicated that he could work with the community in offering a subsequent training, should we have staff that need to have that training prior to the next one in the, in the summer. So we might be able to get an, you know, a midterm one done in order to be able to, if we onboard staff that haven't already taken that training.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? Seeing none, we'll move on in the agenda. Next item up is 14A, unfinished business for Town Council action. Consideration on action on a resolution authorizing the deactivation of the electric vehicle charging station at the Town Hall. At this time, I will open up for discussion, and then we can.
Do a motion first.
Okay. Well, if we want to do a motion first, we can do a motion first.
I'll make the motion.
All right. Motion has been made by Mr. Woods, seconded by Ms. George, I mean, excuse me, Ms. Wakefield. I need to get more sleep. Ms. Gloria, if you could just go over this, please.
Yes, so I did go back to our town engineer. We discussed back with the electrician, the concern that they, the reason for the recommendation for full decommissioning was the concern that somebody was going to potentially plug in at the station and potentially cause damage to the vehicle. So we kind of went back through the process, re-looked at everything, so we would be able to install a lockout-tagout breaker into the box, de-energizing it, but also to make sure that nobody could potentially plug in on the external. We did find that we could put a bag, essentially an out-of-service bag, over the actual unit, zip tie it on, so that way it can't get removed. And that would essentially make sure that nobody runs into that risk, definitely reduces the outlay. We're expecting to be less than $300 in order to have that completed. That can be done within our operating budget, we don't require any transfer for that. So if that's the will of the council, that we can, we can make that happen.
Thank you. I believe our numbers we were looking at before is it was costing the taxpayers roughly $120 a month in utilities to run that. Now, I also know that we've got this new increase from Eversource, so I know those numbers would be substantially higher.
Well, but no, it won't be substantially higher for the town, because we lock in our electric rates.
Okay.
So our electric rate isn't going to increase, like, so we have actually locked in our electric rates for, I'm going to look it. Jen's in the booth, she's not going to hear me. I want to say we locked in for another 10 months to a year for our electric rate, so.
Is that the rate until the end of the year?
End of the year, yeah. So we're locked in on our electric rate, so we're not going to be experiencing those increases that, because we shop out our electric rate. So, but even still, we're, we're estimating that the town is expending about $360 a month in electric energy costs, based on what we have, what we, what we averaged for consumption. Again, I don't have a direct meter on this, I don't, I can't give you direct numbers of exactly what is being consumed on there. We are doing, we based our estimations of consumption based on what we observe, vehicles being out there and plugged in and the frequency of that, so that's how we developed that estimate.
Thank you. So basically, we'd be looking at roughly the money we lose in one month that we're paying, we, in a sense, what we're expending to shut it off would be equal to one month's of electricity that the taxpayers have been paying.
Yep, and we did check with, with Eversource with regards to our grant application for the replacement unit that we have submitted the grant application for. They are evaluating our application, they did ask for some additional breakdown information. Eversource, the grant pays 100% of the make-ready costs, which basically is the installation, the decommissioning of the existing unit and a removal of that unit, and the installation costs of the new unit. They pay 50% of the hardware of the new unit. So we had to give them that additional breakdown. So based on that information, I'm estimating that the town share for the replacement of just the Town Hall unit is likely going to come back from Eversource to be somewhere around $3,500, based on the information that I have right now. So that would be something that I would bring eventually, once we get the information back from Eversource, I'll bring it to the Fiscal Subcommittee to determine funding and appropriation for that before it comes to the Town Council, because there is multiple units that we're looking at. But Eversource is in the process of evaluating the application.
Now, the $3,500 cost, is that something that could get rolled into the rate we charge users?
So the town.
So the town can recoup that cost over time?
Yeah, so the town can establish our, our rates. So yes, we can factor our total costs in.
Okay, all right. Thank you. I will open up for questions, comments.
So when do we, when can that be essentially shut off?
It probably will take us only if, once you guys act tonight, probably sometime middle of next week, I would think.
Right, and shutting this off doesn't mean that this is going away forever, like you had mentioned there. We're, we're really looking to replace it with something that will be able to recoup costs for our electric. And obviously, the current unit can't be upgraded like that, because it's that old. So this isn't a gone forever, it's just a temporary solution to make sure that taxpayers aren't paying for free electric, paying for someone else's free electricity, if you will.
I did some research myself, on the automotive side, being a ASE Master Tech who also holds certification in hybrids, and because it is a AC charger and not a DC charger, it was a, it was very simple to figure out that there's no way that the system can backfeed, because without seeing the AC current going into the vehicle, the inverter, which converts it to DC to charge the battery, doesn't allow a link between the charging port and the DC battery, so there's no way for the car itself to backfeed into the building.
Right, we just wanted to put the cover on it to make sure that somebody's not, you know, like thinking that I'm plugged in and I'm charging and I'm going to come back five, you know, four hours later and I have a dead vehicle sitting there that.
Make it a half a mile down the road and it's dead.
Right, so, you know, we'll put the out-of-service, just so everyone is clear that it's truly out of service.
Any further comments, questions? So we had a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. We'll now move on in the agenda. Next item up is 14B, consideration and action on resolution authorizing the issuance of a letter supporting KB Ambulance's application for non-emergency transportation licensing. What I would like to, to have, I, I would entertain a motion to suspend the rules. I do understand that we do have representation from DeKimmel Hospital and also representation from KB Ambulance to give us some more information that we had asked for last time they were here.
I move to suspend the rules.
Okay. Motion was made by Mr. Grandowski, seconded by Ms. Murphy. Discussion. All of. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Because we are being recorded, we will have to ask you to either come up to the table, come up to the podium. If KB wants to come up to the table and De Kimball wants to share the podium, that way we get everybody up here at once and we can bounce questions around and get whatever information you have. Either, either or, wherever you can fit in. So I know there was a lot of questions that were asked last time around. I know there's a lot of information gathering that's been going on. I will be transparent. I have met with some of the fire chiefs to discuss this privately, individually with them. I've also met with KB Ambulance. I had a very long conversation with them, meeting with them last Friday. We sat, we were there for over a couple hours. I want to thank everyone who's been available for me to discuss this and try and wrap my brain around this, because this is all new to me. I want to thank everyone for their time, whether you're here or you're listening. I also did, had, I've had several conversations with our town manager and I also had a conversation today with Judy Reynolds from OEMS. I want to thank you all for being here. If you could, I don't know which side wants to start, just tell us any further developments that have gone on since, as far as coverage negotiations, anything like that, and the licensing process since our last meeting.
Good evening. Steve Varga, Chief of KB Ambulance. I first want to thank everybody. I know that this has brought a lot of discussions to the town and the northeast corner of Connecticut. And I'm sure there'll be plenty more to come. So we did start assisting De Kimball. We are providing one ambulance, you know, our backup ambulance as much as we can. Obviously, with the, the short timeframe of this, we don't have the staff to cover that 24/7. We're still working to build that. It's gone fairly well. You know, obviously, it's not the full program that De Kimball needs, so they are utilizing backups as much as possible. And that definitely causes some slowdowns across the, across De Kimball and some, you know, anxiety across the, De Kimball as well as KB and the rest of the ambulances in the, in the area. To date, we've done about 45 transports out of De Kimball. We've also used that transfer ambulance in the 911 system at least four times as a, as a backup. And again, I'm not going to say that it's been completely smooth. It's a, it's a rough ride with, with the limited ambulances in the area. And, you know, I know across, across the state, the ambulance services are changing. There were more changes made today in the eastern side of Connecticut that may or may not affect us up here as well. So it's, it's an interesting time and I, I think that as we build this program, if we do it right, it'll be really good for the northeast corner and, and be able to provide that service.
I think from the hospital's perspective, I would, I did owe Steve's comments. I believe it's probably gone a little bit better than Steve has, because I'm not on the receiving end of the phone calls, quite honestly. We have had a few faux pas, but I would say they're very few and far between. But, you know, I've tried to communicate with four other services in the area. I intend to send another email to them. Unfortunately, today my computer was on the fritz most of the day, to the chiefs of other various ambulances to be backup to it. But I, I think we have to be realistic, that there's nobody else coming in to help us with this. So if we don't get the letter of support from Killenley, it will not look good at the OEMS level. We have been meeting with not only Judy, but her boss, which is Ralph, what's her last name? She changed her last name? Anyway, and the, the director of all of the Department of Public Health, which is Barbara Cass. They are all three supportive of this. They cannot say it is good or bad, because it has to go through the process, of course, and they've been very clear to us, they are not the decision makers. They, they support, guide, and help. Our application, or Steve's unbelievable application, by the way, it's one of the best they've ever seen, is, was brought upstairs today with Putnam's support letter. So I, I asked the council to give us the support letter, because quite honestly, if this doesn't pass, who's going to take care of northeastern Connecticut? There's nobody coming to help us. I'm a resident of Brooklyn. I've been here for 40 some odd years and I've been managing EDs for about 25 years of my career. Nobody comes in to help communities right now. There's no white knight coming in and there's no other ambulance service. The closest ambulance service is to us that can help us are American. So far to date, they have not replied to my emails and, hey, let's sit down and have a conversation. And then Ambulance Service of Manchester, who has been helping us. They've actually, are growing in eastern Connecticut, but they don't really want to be to the level of KB or what AMR was. So I think we have to be realistic about this. It's, it's, it's a lot of change and as Steve pointed out, there's, just today, a change has happened in ambulance services. There are many ambulance services being purchased by other hospitals. Hartford has owned, they purchased Hunter, which is out of Hartford. They own part of two other ambulance services. They work for Hartford. Hartford is not, like we've already said, can, can Hunter come out here and help us transport people to Hartford? There is a chance. I, I am having a conversation with them, but they're not going to move their units out here to help us with all our other transfers. It's not going to happen. And as he said, 42 transfers? The hospital's been running very high over the past two weeks. Today, last night, we finally dropped a little bit, which is a good thing and it's a bad thing, right? But if we couldn't have moved those 42 patients, we would not be accepting patients in our ED. That's the real reality of it. So, anyway. John O'Keefe from De Kimball, by the way, I'm the chief nurse. Sorry, I'm supposed to say that, right?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. O'Keefe. I just have questions and this is to De Kimball. If for some reason, even with a support letter, if you're, if KB does get the support letter, if they don't get the license, what does that mean for De Kimball? How are you handling the times now? What procedures do you have in place now if it comes down to KB doesn't have a crew available and you need a transport? I'm aware that there was something that went down last Friday where there was a call into 911 and I, I believe it was KB's medic had to get pulled to, to do a transport for a call, for a transport that came into the 911 system. What steps are you taking to prevent the 911 system from taking on the transports if KB isn't available at the time? Or even if they do get the license and they have the two ambulances and you need a third or a fourth transport when the two transport vehicles they have are already on the road? What are you doing? What procedures are you taking to make sure that the 911 system doesn't get the overflow and impacted?
Yep. So currently, what we're doing is if KB can't take a transfer, we are calling other ambulance services to see if they can take them. As I believe I explained before, ambulance services in the state of Massachusetts that can transport, have the license to pick up in the state of Connecticut or any other state, I believe, but they have to deliver the patient to a Massachusetts hospital. So we are utilizing that service. As I said before, we, American has helped us out, ASM has helped us out. ASM actually has a truck out here a fair amount of the time. They don't want that truck sitting idle, so they would love it if they delivered a person to eastern Connecticut. They would take them back to, you know, western Connecticut or Hartford, right? One of the things that we're also doing is talking about the length of our transfers. So when you call into certain hospitals, so right now, if we call into UMass and they give us an accepting bed, the accepting beds are going to be in Worcester, right? They're either going to be at Memorial or the Worcester campus. They're not going to be at their other underlying hos, their other outlying hospitals, because they have a different system approach than Hartford does. Hartford has several larger hospitals within their system. So one of the things that our chief medical officer, Dr. Durche, is talking to the physician that's in charge of all of Hartford Healthcare's transfer service or bed service. So you call Hartford and you say, I need a bed for a specific type of patient, they could tell you that that bed is in Bridgeport, which, you know, is wonderful to get a bed, but that's another hour that our truck or his truck is on the road. So we're going to have conversations with Hartford to say, we need to try to get the De Kimball transfers a little bit closer to De Kimball, so that we're not on the road that much. And right now, what will be the same, if we get the full service that we hope to in the future, which is two trucks, one truck 24/7, two trucks during daylight hours, basically, which is what AMR was supplying, we will do the same thing that AMR did, right? If AMR didn't have a truck, we, we had to assess those patients and say, this patient has to go. This patient can wait. And we use our physicians to do that. And Dr. Wexler, who is our emergency department chair, who is also the chairman and chief medical officer of a national physician service, who I believe is in 50 other hospitals around the United States, and he is also medical control for our area. He is having conversations with LifeStar and Lifelight, because they also have ground crews available. So those are the services right now that we're using. We'll continue to use them. We use the same services when AMR was here, when they could not take a patient. But ultimately, it's going to be up to the ED physician to really determine, patient A needs to go faster than patient B, regardless of whether that patient's in the ED. And he communicated that to, boy, what meeting we're at, I've been to so many talking about this, I get confused. He spoke to his docs about it and he spoke to our physician leadership about that at the hospital. And I believe we talked about it at KB Ambulance. We had a meeting with all of the medics and EMTs last Wednesday, correct? Yeah. So, and he certainly would, you know, if you have specific questions that you feel only he can answer, he would certainly take those phone calls and answer those questions.
I, I've heard a lot of concerns over the past couple of weeks. Some of the biggest concerns were possible impact to 911 service for the area. And seeing what happened last Friday, it definitely didn't help calm those concerns. It definitely added to them. And I, I understand from, the, the way I look at this is if there's nothing in place for a transport service, it's going to have a negative impact on your ability to bring in more patients, your ability to move patients that need to get moved. And if, if you don't have a, exactly, is if you go through that chain of call LifeStar, call whoever's next, you go through the line of the providers you have to call and no one's available in the timeframe you need, my understanding is at that point, if it's an urgent patient and they have to be moved, that at that point, you would have to call 911. Correct me if I'm wrong on that. But, and if that's the case, then at that point, then it is going to impact the 911 service. Whereas if you do have a contract, whether it's with KB or with another ambulance provider, then that gives that buffer to help control and you would know when you, what you have for staffing more readily available as far as transports. That way, you can work around, all right, we know we're going to have an ALS at this time, we're going to have a BLS at this time, we're going to have two ambulances this time, this time, and then schedule around when the transports can happen. And as you said, prioritize, patient A needs to be moved, patient B can wait till later when we're going to have another transport back or have another crew on that's available. The way I look at it, and this is me personally, is you need to have something in place, whether it's KB or another ambulance provider, you, you need to do something to protect our 911 services. And, and also the fact of when someone ends up in an ambulance, they're going to De Kimball and if you're not able to transport that person out to someone else, like you said, you don't have beds available. And then that patient could end up having to go to a different hospital if you don't have a bed available, is, correct me on, if I'm wrong on that as well. I just think that the most important thing is that you reach an agreement with someone, get a contract in place. So that way, in a sense, I'll put it this way, control the chaos. And it is, I can see benefits to this program. If KB gets their licenses or whoever it is has ambulances stationed in the area, that is more resources available for the 911 system if you don't have any transports available. And my understanding is, Steve, you had, you did mention you had a few times where because you had a crew on for the transport, where you were able to pick up other 911 calls you normally wouldn't have been able to.
That's correct. We had, it was either three or four, possibly five, I don't know. I meant to pull the numbers today, but we definitely, like we do our callbacks that we've always done, we've done it for decades, we do a callback. You know, obviously, over time, the volunteerism is down, those callbacks are harder and harder to fill. So if nobody called in, we utilize, and that transfer truck was available, we utilize that crew. And, and we have done that at least four times.
If I may, Kyle Kramer, President and Chief Executive Officer at De Kimball. We're, we're talking a lot about one, 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 one transport that was a 911 call. We're not focusing on the many transports that occurred appropriately. We're talk, we're not talking about the fact that in a very short amount of time, we have a tremendous team of colleagues from KB working in partnership with John, with Dr. Wexler and others to stand up a service that didn't exist until January 1. I think that's remarkable. I'm standing at a podium that says, never doubt that a small group of thoughtful, committed citizens can change the world. Indeed, it is the only thing that ever has. Here's your committed group, small group of citizens. Doing what's right for northeast Connecticut, ensuring that our region is protected, has services available. Do Steve and Scott have all the solutions today? No, they don't. Is there a national shortage of EMTs? Absolutely. Last Monday night, we watched a young man on a field in Cincinnati essentially drop dead and it was EMTs that brought him back, transported him safely to a hospital. That young man was taken to Buffalo and is likely to be discharged from a hospital this week. That's what EMTs do. That's the type of partnership that we're building with our colleagues from KB. That's the relationship that we have with these gentlemen and the staff that they are fortunate to, to, to have and that we're blessed to work with. We knew that this wasn't going to be perfect on day one or day three or even day seven. But we're working on it as we go. We have a partnership with OEMS. We're getting very solid feedback from them. We have their support. They can't give us an approval, but we've been told that we have the strongest application that they've seen and we believe that this will work. We're focusing on one 911 call. And yes, does that add to chaos? It does. We admit that. Does that mean that it's always going to happen? Absolutely not. Are we learning from that? Yes, we are. Are we improving every day? Are we going to get better at... Are we going to get better at this? Without a doubt. Are we doing what's right to protect our region? Unquestionably. We can focus on the negative, or we can choose to focus on the positive. We can choose to move forward. We can choose to build, grow and develop a service that enhances our region, provides the residents of Northeast Connecticut with better EMT access, ambulance services, and ultimately is something that makes us all proud. Or we can focus on the negative. I choose, we choose at De Kimball to focus on the positive. We choose to focus on growth. We choose to focus on advancement. And we couldn't be more proud of what these gentlemen and the team from KB have done in a very short amount of time. We think that it is nothing short of remarkable. We look forward to partnering with them. We are very proud to be in a relationship with them that we think is going to be very successful. We have the support of Putnam. We look forward very much to the support from, from this council. We heard on December 20th, the various fire chiefs expressed their support for KB and for the advancement of the relationship, and we hope that that support still stands. So we would ask for your continued interest and engagement. We know that we will have that for sure, and we hope that we can, can earn your support because this relationship matters. The ability for us to bring patients into the hospital is important, but there are some patients that need to move beyond the hospital. Some emergently, some back to a residential area or to some other type of a, a facility for ongoing care. That's something that allows us to continue to care for other patients who need to come into the hospital. So this relation, relationship with KB truly matters. It's something that we believe in, and we wouldn't have started the discussions with our colleagues if we didn't think that they had the capability ultimately to make this work, that with our support, we could grow something that, that truly is meaningful and representative of what healthcare in Northeast Connecticut should be. And we're, we're very pleased that, that we're to the point where we are. We know that we have more to do. We know that we have further learning to, to, to undertake, and we know that through those efforts, we will encourage more staff to join this organization and to join this effort, and will ultimately make this endeavor even stronger than it is today. And we think that it is worthwhile for this council to support it, to allow it to grow naturally and to be a part of what we do across this region in support of those patients that require care. Thank you.
Thank you. One other piece I'd like to add, in all the discovery and investigation, whatever you want to call, everything I've been doing the past couple of weeks, one of the things that came to light, and I did confirm this with OEMS today when I was talking with, with Judy Reynolds, is KB Ambulance was never required to come to Killenly for our support. The only thing that was required in their application was to go to Putnam. KB Ambulance came to us out of an act of courtesy because, as Steve told me, they're a part of this community and they wanted, they wanted our involvement, they wanted us to know. And, I mean, this is something where if it goes good, it's going to be great for the community. If it goes bad, it's going to be bad for the 911 service. My, the one fear I have is if by, by not supporting this, if it does cost them the ability to get their license, then it could be a very big detriment on our 911 system. And wherever you would want to say that blame or fault lies, if that was the situation, I believe the finger would be pointed back on the council for opposing it. And like I said during my discussions with OEMS, what I was told was a letter of support from the town of Killenly, from the town of Killenly wasn't required for their application. This is something that Steve and De Kimball, and excuse me, KB Ambulance just extended us the courtesy as members of our community. I just wanted to add that in there as well.
And, and John O'Keefe, again, I, I think the thing that I would point out, it's a letter of support. It's not a financial commitment. If, for whatever reason, KB says, you know, "We can't do this," and De Kimball has to go out and do something different, it doesn't hold Killenly to anything. You're just supporting the license. You're supporting the application. That's all you're doing. So by not supporting it, quite honestly, in my opinion, you're actually hurting KB. Because I think if I was a paramedic looking for a job, these days, there's a lot of paramedic jobs out there. But if Steve can say what he's interviewing, "Listen, our application's in, I got a support letter from the town of Putnam," and I get really proud to say, "I got a support letter from the town of Killenly." Because as we all know, Killenly's the largest town in northeastern Connecticut, hands down. To me, if I were Judy, if I were Ralph and I was Barbara Cass, I would think, even though it's not necessary, a letter from the town of Killenly's council means something. So.
So, been in healthcare for about 20 years or so myself. Whose responsibility is it to make sure De Kimball had transfer services before the end of last year?
De Kimball.
So who specifically? Is there a specific? I know you have multiple, multiple, multiple administration, it all piles down. There's got to be somebody that's responsible for that.
No, I don't, it's myself, probably me, Kyle and Dr. Wexler. We would be the three.
So, all this putting the blame game on the Killenly Town Council, "If we don't give you a support letter, it's our fault." Shouldn't it, the, the blame belongs back where?
Who's pointing blame?
We just, we just, we just talked to AMR last week.
Who, who's pointing blame? Nobody's blaming anybody.
You, "It's not going to look good on the town of Killenly?"
No, I'm saying, I didn't say that. I said, "It looks good if we have the letter of support." I never said, "It looks bad." Please don't put words in my mouth.
That's fine, but ultimately...
No, it's not fine when you put words in my mouth.
The responsibility belongs to De Kimball. This is De Kimball's responsibility.
I said that the first time I came here, I said, "This was an ask of De Kimball of KB."
I, I sat and I talked with Steve. I talked with Steve today. I have a, I have a family member that's employed by KB. I, my family's been involved in emergency services in this entire, for generations. Multiple, multiple generations. I have been teaching CPR and first aid in the town of Killenly for over 14 years. I don't want the people that I've trained to expect to call 911 and not be able to have KB show up, or their fire department.
We all agree.
All because somebody at De Kimball didn't do their job. That's what it comes down to. You were notified, according to AMR, as of June of last year. That gave you six months that somebody dropped the ball.
I'm going to respectfully disagree with you. I met with Chris Chaplin, I met with his colleague, Brandon. We were not given notice in June. We were given a proposal to provide them with payment. That was not notice. Period. If you'd like, I can show you the presentation. It was not a document of notice, and Chris said that himself. If you want me to, I'll call him right now.
So...
We got a letter of notice on November 1.
You had a contract with, you did have a contract with him, correct?
That is correct.
So he knew he had to give you 60 days?
Which, it was on November 1.
So he did give you 60 days?
We started discussions, we had discussions with them regarding continuing the relationship, appropriating, gaining appropriation of state funds to provide supplementation for the requests that they made. They decided, they were into that discussion until they weren't. They gave us notice in early December that they had provided their employees with notice of exit from the market. We ultimately had to move very quickly. We thought we had a, an agreement that we would proceed with state funding. We had support legislatively for said funding. It goes into the state budget. It's not a checkbook that just immediately occurs. So if you want to point fingers, you know, we can do that. I think at the end of the day, that's not productive, that's not effective, that's not going to get us anywhere. What we're talking about is a relationship, and I'm not going to have you point at my colleague here.
I, I'm, you know what? I'm not going to fry KB Ambulance either. They've been around for over 70 years.
We, we respect KB.
They've, they've been part of this community for way longer than probably anybody in this room. And I rely on them. My family has relied on them, and I'm not comfortable allowing De Kimball's problem to become their problem.
I don't think that's happening. We've made a business request, and they're working on partnering with us to do that. That's not making any problem anyone's. That's creating a business relationship that's supporting a partnership opportunity, and it's providing healthcare access to citizens who live across this region. If you feel differently, that's your, that's your right. You have every right to make that statement. I applaud you for your being a part of training CPR and first aid. That's great. I've trained first aid as well. I've been a part of scouting for many years. I've trained many students and, and many scouts in first aid who have gone on to become EMTs. So I get it. I understand, and we value this relationship as well. We are proud to partner with KB, and we rely on them as well because they bring a whole lot of patients to our hospital. We don't want to see anything jeopardize their ability to provide services. We think that this is an opportunity, as we move forward, for it to enhance the value of KB to this region, to enable opportunities for more individuals across the region to be employed as a part of KB's services, and to ultimately make the KB enterprise even stronger in our region. Our interests lie there, not in jeopardizing their ability to provide services. And I won't stand for somebody suggesting that that's what we're trying to do. What we're trying to do is make the region stronger. And you're right, AMR did come to us in June. They met with Dr. Wexler and, and me. They asked us for $400,000 to supplement their Medicare and Medicaid transports. Now, I don't know about how many of you have $400,000 just sitting in your checkbook, but that wasn't in the cards. So we pursued different discussions. We tried to get AMR to open their books to understand, "Well, why do you have a $400,000 deficit? Where are your denials? Are you not billing properly? Is there documentation concerns? What can we do to help you?" Silence. Crickets. No response. They made a decision. They pulled out of our region. And we're trying to backfill that space, and we believe we have a partner to do that. And as, you know, as you've learned, KB didn't have to come to this council. They did out of respect for the group, for the town, for the region. That's why we're here too, out of respect. And we want to partner with you. We're the only hospital that exists in our region. We've been here 128 years, almost 129 come August, and it's our intention to be here for another 129 years. But part of that means having relationships, and the KB relationship is an important one.
Mr. Wayhead.
So I have a question for you. So AMR, Chris had mentioned that a big, a big issue he had was because you guys switched and joined with Hartford Healthcare, that now his transports are going to Bridgeport, they're going to New Haven, which is a further transport than basically going to UMass or whatever, whatever facility which was closer. So that's, what he was saying is, is, was hurting them financially, which I could understand. So I think if everybody knew what, what financial backing that you're going to provide over and above, let's say, like you said, you know, some transports are 200, some are 500, some are, are different, different numbers, which I have 0.0 clue about. But how are these guys going to survive knowing that they possibly, AMR, if they're telling the truth, couldn't survive and it wasn't profitable for them? So if they don't survive, then our 911 system doesn't survive, right? So...
Yeah, let me, let me answer. So Scott Shadon, Board Chair at KB. And I'll certainly, you know, allow De Kimball to speak to their support of us. Let me just talk a little bit about process, how we budgeted this so far, and how that's going to move forward. That's a very valid question. We're focusing a lot on that question because there's a lot of unknowns. So today, and what we, what we talked about in the last week of December, and what we've started doing in the first couple of weeks of January, is we evaluated the cost of what it would be to provide De Kimball with a very short-term resource to do what they're asking. Covers payroll, covers overtime, covers administrative staff that we haven't hired yet, covers additional staff that we haven't hired yet, maintenance on equipment, a component of the building, a component of our mortgage. We've put that all together, and we came up with a very short-term monthly cost. And that's what we've agreed on today, and that monthly cost is before licensing. Because that monthly cost, there's no billing, right? So we've agreed on that cost coverage and that containment for as many months, I think three months officially on paper, until our licensing changes that process. Now, over the course of the next several months, we are going to gather all the billing material, all the billing data, all the mileage, all that information, and we have a lot of work to do. Because after those several months, and if we are licensed, we are going to then sit down with De Kimball and have those conversations that we haven't had yet.
But wouldn't you, as a businessperson, would you have that information before, before entering into a contract?
So...
I mean, I would want to know the cost before I, before I commit to De Kimball.
Absolutely. So, so what we've entered into is only for a month, and then we'll do it for another month. It's month to month. And we understand the costs today because it's, it's the cost to do it with no billing to back it up. We know that. We have that understanding. It's a full crew, 24 by 7, with a paramedic and an EMT. We know those costs. We know them very well because we do it in all the other services. What we don't know is, come when we're licensed, how billing offsets that, and how much of a gap De Kimball then needs to fund as a cushion. The same conversation AMR was having. We feel we can potentially do it less expensively. It's a benefit to De Kimball, which is helpful to them. It's still a benefit to the region because we have our, our medics and, and our resources local. We think we can do it less expensive because we already have a building, we already have administrative staff, and AMR's, and I'm not going to speak for AMR, but I feel their resources are much further away from northeastern Connecticut. So do we know that for a fact absolutely perfectly? No, we don't. The next few months of data is going to, is going to fill that out. And then the intention, and, and again, it's a board decision, so not my decision, but what I would recommend to our board is, take all that data, and then if we enter into a contract with De Kimball, it's for the remainder of the year, and that's our second step to do validation. And after that step, maybe we talk about something a little longer term. So that's the process that KB is, is thinking about. We're reviewing it daily, if not hourly, right? There's a lot going into this. All of our board members are very involved and asking many, many questions, just like you guys are asking questions within your board, we're doing the same thing. If for some reason, and I hope this doesn't happen, but if for some reason, we can't come to an agreement and we're going to lose money, we're not going to do it. We can't. It'd be crazy. Why would we do that? Why would our board vote to, vote to do that? That'd be insane. So we're going down the road, we're helping in the immediate. Could we then continue it for another few months so that De Kimball could figure out Plan C? Then, then that's, you know, KB is here to help the community. We've always been. Steve has been doing it way longer than I have with KB Ambulance. I've been doing it for 30 something years in one of the fire departments. We're here to do what we can with the resources we have, and we want to expand those resources. And, and I'll just say, coming back to something that I think John mentioned, right? What we're looking for as KB Ambulance is, we're looking for the town's support to enable KB to have another in- to enable KB to have another income stream, which is transfer services. We probably would have come and asked you in the next, in, in the next six months to a year, we probably would have come and asked you for it anyway. Because we need additional funding resources. What Kate, what the situation has done is, is forced us to go faster. We didn't choose that. Again, I don't want to point fingers, right? But here's where we are. So, so we, we thought we had to do something. We're helping the immediate, short-term. We're asking for you to, to support us in a license, and let us then negotiate with Day Kimball and, and figure out our price stream. And we will do that. And we will not do that at the detriment of the organization because we're not, we're responsible for that organization.
So what is your plan to keep the 911 call separate from Day Kimball?
So, great question.
So we know, so we know for a fact...
I'll answer to my level of knowledge, and then I'll let Steve fill, fill in the gaps.
But one more, one more thing. So it, it is the town council that is, is, is taking on, you, you say it's not a responsibility, it's not this, it's not that. So if we, if we give you this, if we give you this letter, we are essentially taking on the same responsibilities as you guys, the same commitment as you guys. Because we're, yes, we are. We're deciding, we're deciding for our constituents that this is a good idea. So that's what we're doing. So you can't shake your head no. Yes, we are.
I guess, I guess politically maybe, but not, I don't know about legally.
Scott, just let me, I'm going to add into this really quick. I did have Ms. Glorio reached out to the town's attorney to get an opinion on that. And if you could, as far as any legal fallback on the council, whether perceived may be different, but actual legal liability coming back on a town, if you could just weigh in on that, please.
Yeah, so I did ask the town, our town attorney as to whether or not the town council, by providing a letter of support, whether the town would then have any additional legal liability should KB Ambulance have difficulties going forward. The town, by providing a letter of support, does not open the town to any liability. We have no legal liability. Whether there's a perceived concern publicly or political matter that's different than an actual legal liability, there's no liability here. You're simply providing a statement of, of support for an application process for a license.
But to me, it would be, above that, it would be on the personal level.
But, but that's, I'm just giving you the response that I got from legal.
I understand. I understand.
So, so to answer your, your other question about how are we keeping it separate? So like I said, I'll give you the high level, and then I'll let Steve answer some details. So we have a scheduling calendar, just like every, we schedule crews, right? So we have a 911 calendar scheduled, and that schedules first ambulance, second ambulance, it schedules the Pomford ambulance, it used to schedule the Thompson ambulance, right? So that is all filled with paid staff, some per diem, some part-time, and that's been filled, that's the way we've been doing business since however long we've been, we've had this schedule. We've created a new schedule that's alongside that, transfer schedule. As we have folks and, and as we have capability, and obviously we put it out to all our members and said, who wants to do this? And we've filled, are we about 50%, maybe a little over 50%, Steve? Where are we with filling that calendar? We know we're not 100. 60% filling that calendar. Is the 911 calendar ever empty, or does it have holes? Well, it does, I, I think you told me of an instance where we had a call out, right? Someone was sick, somebody had to go home. We took the transport medic and put him on the 911. And we didn't have a transport. We canceled the transport, and we filled, backfilled the 911. That's how we do it.
We, we will always fill the 911 first. Day Kimball may not like to hear that, but we will, we will always fill the 911 first.
We've told Day Kimball we will do that. That, that's been agreed upon.
Especially in this state. And frankly, we, we expect that because it's very likely that that 911 patient is coming to us.
Right.
So as a result, you know, we, we support that.
Right. And I, and I think if you think about 911, they're picking up somebody out of the community in a, a non-medical arena, bringing it to the hospital. Even our patients that need to be transferred out, they have nurses and doctors to take care of them. Right? So that's, that's the mentality that we have at Day Kimball. What we're asking should not involve 911. Has there been a FOPA? Yes. But we've actually brought in a new medication on Monday that is a medic, it's, it's a category of medication that we've had forever and a day. It's clockbusters, basically. But this one is more efficient to use and quicker, easier for the nurses and physicians to administer. So, and the reason we brought that in was specifically for patients that may be delayed a little bit. Because for certain types of things, we want to get them to another organization or, or give them treatment within a certain period of time. If this slows down our transfers, we wanted to have this in our toolkit, just in case.
And I do need to clarify one thing. And Councilman Whitehead, I appreciate your comment regarding AMR. But we have not been, we are not now, nor will we ever be part of Hartford Healthcare. Day Kimball is not part of the Hartford enterprise, and we will never be part of the Hartford enterprise.
Okay, that was brought up last time.
Yeah. There are physicians in our community, in particular a cardiology group, that was employed by Hartford Healthcare. And cardiology patients that required catheterization, intervention, surgery, were transported to Hartford because that's their employer. But that's not Day Kimball being a part of Hartford. And the other thing too, that I think we, we have to acknowledge and would be naive to dismiss is the fact that transports over the last several years indeed were longer because that's where a bed might have been available, but there was this little thing called a pandemic that filled a lot of hospitals to the brim. And when you had a patient that was exceedingly sick, well beyond what should be cared for in a community hospital, and they had to go to a higher level of care, we had patients being transferred to Boston, we had transfers to Rhode Island, we had transfers into other parts of Massachusetts. We had transfers well across Connecticut that we'd never seen before. And by the grace of God and knock on wood, we never see again. And we hope that we don't have that level of sickness due to something like a virus. I think it, we, we've overused the word unprecedented with regards to that. But those first number of months of the COVID-19 pandemic were indeed unprecedented. And we had disease that we had never seen, nor had any of the other major tertiary and quaternary centers seen. And we transferred patients far away because that's where there was a bed available that could provide the level of care necessary for a patient. We're not seeing transports going that far of late. I will say that Hartford changed their bed availability in their transport and transfer system. As John mentioned earlier, you call the transfer office, they don't give you a bed that's close to you, they give you a bed that's available. And that bed may be at St. Vincent's Hospital in Bridgeport. We obviously, as John said, are talking with their transport medical director regarding, we really need to keep patients from Northeast Connecticut, closer to Northeast Connecticut, because their with-hums don't travel well. And we don't want to have their loved ones have to travel halfway across the state to, to support that patient during their time of illness and convalescence. You know, we can't control that though because we don't own, operate, or run the transport, or transfer center at Hartford Healthcare. However, they're an important resource, and patients from this region do go there for tertiary and quaternary care. It's very quick if somebody can jet up 395 to UMass, but UMass has been exceedingly full due to issues of the pandemic as well. And of course, St. Vincent's, their clinical staff went out on strike. But where did a lot of patients go? Backfill. They went to UMass. What did that do to their resource availability? It compromised it. What did that put us in a position of? Transports going further. You know, we get it. We had higher costs as well through the pandemic, and we're still dealing with those higher costs for labor. Travel, travel nurses, travel laboratory technicians, travel imaging technicians, technologists, all of that has a higher cost. The supplies that we get, the pharmacologic agents that come into our pharmacy, our inbound transport costs have gone up. Cost of gas is, is higher. So we get all that. That's why we're working with an organization locally to try to keep more patients locally. Challenge is that there's some things beyond that that we don't necessarily control directly ourselves. But we believe we have a partner that is committed to working with us. And we think that that's going to be better for our region.
Point of clarification, St. Vincent's that he said was on strikes in Worcester?
Yeah, St. Vincent's.
St. Vincent's where we transfer patients to is in Bridgeport, Connecticut.
Thank you, John.
Two different St. Vincent's because we don't want to mix those up.
So AMR had mentioned that the insurance companies, they don't reimburse as well for longer transports. Is that, is that true?
Well, they reimburse, they, they reimburse the same for a transport. What they don't reimburse is the mileage back. Is that not true? They reimburse, delivery, they, they, it's like $27 a mile, right?
That's what you're sold, that's the way you go.
When Chris said that, it's true, but for part of the ride, you are paid. And the reason that it's so high, because 27, I would love to drive it seven, $27 a mile, right? The problem is, is that you're driving a truck with two professionals in it. And that's why, if you look at the shorter ride, the better it all, the better it is for the families. Because, you know, let's face it, most of us, we don't like to travel much to see our families in hospitals. Like Hartford's the farthest distance I want to go. I don't know about you guys, but I don't really like going to Boston to see family. I, you know, I'm kind of a local kind of person. And so it helps the family, as Kyle pointed out, but it also helps that whomever is driving that truck, they're not out of our community that long. And true, that's billed. So that won't happen until KB gets their transport license.
The other thing I think is important to recognize is that we know, Scott and Steve know especially, and obviously AMR dealt with as well, the fact that, you know, EMT transport, or EMS transport is not reimbursed well in the state of Connecticut, period. We're having some discussions with the state legislature about that as well. We're hopeful that we'll be able to influence that. And I think, you know, again, going back to my comments about what happened a, a week or so ago in Cincinnati, and the importance of emergency medical services being elevated and, and being put in the spotlight on how important it is, I think that gives us a platform to have a different dialogue with, with regulators and legislators about the fact that this is an incredibly valuable resource. There are not a whole ton of folks going into it as a profession or as a job. And the reimbursement for these services is woefully inadequate, and it needs to be changed. You know, the state of Connecticut has a significant surplus in their budget, and we think that there's opportunity. And we've had some discussions already with our local legislators about supporting some improvements for Northeast Connecticut in particular.
But I think the point that we should add is the, the contacts we made when we were working with AMR, those contacts, we're still working on.
Yeah.
So just because AMR is out of the picture, we're still asking for legislative support for EMS services in Northeastern Connecticut, which ultimately would funnel either through the hospital to KB, because that's our partner, or directly to KB, correct?
Correct.
And we have a legislative person that we work with to do that.
I just have a couple of questions, and this is for Day Kimball. I know you had mentioned looking into reaching out to family members if it was a non-emergency transport to try and lessen the burden on your transport service. I know it's only been a week and a half. Is that something you've started implementing? If you have, have you had any success at that?
Yes and yes.
Easy enough.
But those, just so people understand, those are transports like my mother's going to a nursing home, and, and she can sit in a car.
Yeah.
That, that's the, that's what we're trying to work on. We have had some success with that. I had a very frank conversation with one of the case managers today about it. So the answer is yes and yes, but certainly not to where I think it should be, by the way.
No, you're, you're just...
A woman, Murphy, had a, she's had her hand raised for a bit.
Mr. Kramer, I, I think this might need to relate to you. So when Mr. Chaplin was on the call last week...
Mike?
Sorry, guys. He talked about unbillables and how Day Kimball was not, and not to, I, I can't quote him directly. But his, his comment was that Day Kimball was not supporting their ability to collect on some of the unbillables. And it was a pretty good percentage. How is that going to be different? What if KB falls into the same situation where they have a pretty good chunk of change they can't collect on, on their own? How is Day Kimball going to support them collecting that funding?
So I think I'll answer your question with a question. So Ms. George, I'd like, I need you to give me $400,000.
They're a for-profit company. They are in business to make money. So comparing them to a nonprofit is not...
My point is, we, so we asked them, we asked them, so, okay. That's an interesting question. Can you help us understand what those unbillables are? Can you help us understand what those costs are that you're not recovering? Can you help us understand what your denial rates are, or why you're not receiving reimbursement for those services? They didn't open those books. And John, John and I have done this for a long time. John's been in healthcare for 30-plus years. I'm going on 34 years. You know, I know that, you know, for a claim to be made, there has to be rational justification for that claim being submitted. And there are specific things that a payer looks for in order to be able to provide reimbursement for that service. What we want to know is, okay, why are you being denied?
So, so you were saying...
They were not willing to provide us with any of that information.
So they weren't giving you the documentation to see?
Zero.
So you could help support them in getting those?
Absolutely not.
Okay.
So, so I think to understand this, right, so the, the hospital deems the patient medically necessary, that the patient to be transferred. If, if we don't document that specifically the way that that particular insurance company wants it, then you can get what's called a denial. I personally was the one who said to Chris, what are your denials? Can I help you find that $400,000? At the time, believe it or not, I really didn't know it was $400,000. I just knew they had asked for a chunk of change. And he said, well, I don't have that information. I can tell you, as a non-profit organization, I can call and find out what my denial rate is in any of my services. How do you come to a small community hospital that they know is struggling financially, right? It's, it's no mystery that Day Kimball struggles financially and has for years, right? That you came and asked for $400,000, but you didn't know what your, what your denials were. Because if those denials are based upon our physicians not documenting something correctly, I can help you with that.
Right, you can fix that.
Correct.
So, so that goes to my next part. So I understand if that's the case. However, now if that starts happening with KB...
Already been talking to them.
So are you going to be able to assist that?
We're already having this dialogue.
I've already said to Steve, I want to know every denial you get that comes out of Day Kimball. I want to physically see it. And we've already agreed, he's already started talking, or Scott and he have already started talking to their billing company. They're actually going to take stuff that they know they can't bill for because they don't have the license, and they're going to be showing it to their billing company so that their billing company has a level of comfort on what they're getting out of Day Kimball. Now, we're not going to have no denials, right? That, that just doesn't happen these days. But it's certainly something with the transparency I expect out of KB and Day Kimball. And the reason I keep pointing to him, because I think you and I communicate more than anybody else at the moment through this process, I want him to feel comfortable that I'm up fighting for his fight, and I feel comfortable that he's fighting the fight. Right? We're in this for Northeastern Connecticut. We're not in it for Day Kimball or KB. We're in it for Northeastern Connecticut.
Yeah, there's, and, and I think you raise a really great question with regards to the whole denial information. You can only fix what you know about. If somebody's unwilling to share information with you and open, open a level of transparent dialogue so that you can really understand what's the cause so we can influence the effect, there's not much you can do. And KB was, KB is more than willing to do that. AMR was unwilling to provide that information. So we don't know what was broken that was causing the issue. So as a result, it's a little bit difficult for, for me to stand here and say that, you know, well, we were, except somebody saying, well, we did something wrong when they were unwilling to be transparent with us and allow us the opportunity or the courtesy to try to understand what was creating the issue. I mean, it may have only, if we worked through things and we had insight to that information, maybe the real gap is only $100,000. $100,000 over 12 months really isn't that much in the grand scheme of things. You know, is it a lot of money? Yeah, it is. But is it something that we could figure out and swallow? Probably so. The reality though is that when somebody comes and says, I need a big number, and is unwilling to give you any backup behind what's causing that big number, like, well, timeout. We need a little information. I think I have the right to request some transparency on that. And we made that request and we were basically shut down and got, got zero information. And I, you know, again, I, I respect Chris. He's a great guy. And, you know, I don't know that it was really up to him to make the decision. You know, we got great service from AMR. I mean, they're a very good ambulance company. And they're very, very much larger than KB.
And that's their wheelhouse, transport, correct? Correct me if I'm wrong.
Both, they do both.
But that's what, they do both nationally?
They do nine-one-one transport and they also, they don't do it here.
That's what I'm saying, but that's what they do.
That opportunity in northeast Connecticut many years ago.
Right.
But, you know, in northeast Connecticut, they had a contract just to do transport. But in other areas and in other parts of the country, actually other parts of the world, they do, you know, emergent transport.
Yeah, but what I was saying, just in here, that's.
Correct. Just northeast Connecticut, they will only do a transport.
This is a concern for the community as far as that is a separate wheelhouse from what KB does. So we just want to ensure that the nine-one-one stays a priority.
Yeah.
The cost to our tax base, to be honest, is not, we are not supplementing your startup. That's the key.
No, no, and we're not asking for that at all. We're not asking for that in the least.
Transparency too.
Yeah.
And, and I would say, as an organization, absolutely KB as an organization is new to this service. But I'll, I'll throw something at Steve. Steve, how many members in our organization have done transfers? Three quarters?
I don't know, about three quarters, but probably about half.
Okay.
But you got to understand that they, they are already scheduled on the nine-one-one side, right? So the current members.
Correct.
If they're taking transfers, they're going above and beyond.
Absolutely.
And we're not taking them off the nine-one-one schedule. You know, I, we're not changing their schedule and putting them on a transfer truck until we have adequate staffing. If they want to take a shift on that truck, they're more than welcome. But we can't do that until we have staffing to fill that position that, on the nine-one-one side that they're coming off of, right? So everything that be, is being scheduled on the, on the transfer side is either new hires that are coming in just to, maybe not just to do the transport ambulance, but that's why they are getting hired. Or people that are picking up extra time to, to go on that truck.
And there's been some trades, right? Some folks have said, I don't mind doing the transport. So a per diem or a part-timer picks up their shift and they swap off. So, you know, we're, we're using, we're using some creative means to, to get these shifts covered, but we're not stripping anything off the nine-one-one side to do that. Which is why they're not full. I mean, I don't, I understand the concern, but I just don't see how we could ever, we're going to not have an ambulance today to go pick up people at the house, to move people from, I just, I just don't. It's, it befuddles me why we would even think to do that.
So I just have three quick questions and like one of them is to you too, and maybe, I don't know. And I'll spit them out and then you guys can answer so that we don't go on and on. My question to you would be, in your conversations with the fire chiefs, did they ever waiver? And then the other questions were, I'd like to understand profit and nonprofit and how that fits into the ambulance. Like, what does that look like? Is it cost more? Does it cost less? I don't quite understand how that picture is. And then my last question is on the four hundred thousand dollars to AMR. I'd like to know what the monthly number is that you see coverage? Like, so you feel in this whole process, that covering them until they're up to speed is going to be less than four hundred thousand? Is it that and that's the main reason you let them go? Or is it also this transparency issue? So those are my three questions.
I'll start, since my question was first. In my conversations with the chiefs, and like I said, I spoke with some of the chiefs, I was unable to speak with all of the chiefs. Overwhelmingly, what I got was if this goes forward and goes as planned, it's going to be a valuable asset to the community in that there are more resources available, especially if there's a extreme high demand incident that happens that requires a large amount of nine-one-one ambulances to be able to go out at one time. There are those additional assets in town, especially if they've got two ambulances ready for transports. Dave Kimball doesn't have any transports at the time. And then the nine-one-one system gets calls. And it wouldn't necessarily just be Killenley. It could be Brooklyn. It, it could be Plainfield, where if there's a big accident on three ninety-five in Plainfield and they're out of ambulances down there, KB's not that far from hopping on three ninety-five to go down and help out mutual aid to other towns.
So they never wavered, they stayed positive?
The conversations I had with them, everything I've heard, when, any meetings after the evening where we met here, I, I didn't have any, anyone say that they felt this was a bad idea. You're welcome.
From a, if we, if this gets fully staffed, and I'm going to speak for Dave Kimball and probably going out on a limb here, but, you know, I myself has been under the back of an ambulance a couple of times, not as a nurse, although I've been that too. But I've been back there as a patient. Multiple of my family members KB has actually picked up, right? Major accident a couple of months ago, he was the paramedic and he helped save one of our employees. I would expect that when they're fully staffed, Dave Kimball will expect KB to manage their resources, that they're not transferring granny to a nursing home when they have a nine-one-one call that they could take care of, right? I would expect Steve to say, or, or anybody else at KB that's managing it for that day, that needs to wait. So we talked about this at the first meeting and I believe it was actually one of the fire chiefs that brought this up.
Stop, that part, I don't have any question about.
Okay.
Could you speak to the nonprofit and profit so I can understand this?
Very easy. A for-profit company wants to make a certain percent.
No, I understand what they want, but how does that look in the ambulance world?
It's same thing in the regular business world. So AMR is. No, no. Every company expects their own, whatever their number is. Like, we don't know what AMR, so for instance, AMR was asking for four hundred K, right? We don't know that a hundred, a hundred thousand of that was pure profit and three hundred was cover expenses or all four hundred was covering expenses with no profit. We don't know because they didn't share their books. And I'll give you an example. I happen to own two, two contracts of physicians at the hospital. One of them, I have to make them whole. So every quarter, they come to me and the chief financial officer and they show us their books. They don't just say, hey, give us some money. They come with their books. I see what the doctors make, I see what so-and-so makes, I see what their administrative costs are. I've even said to them, oh, wait a minute, that administrative cost seems a little high. Can we shave that down a little bit?
So nonprofit, the only difference, it's not about state funding or anything, just a lower target to make them whole.
That's the way I think of it, yes.
I, I, I think we've got some, some, some clarifying detail that should be provided. A, a for-profit company has no obligation to provide community benefit whatsoever. They're all about making money, period, done, the end. The only thing they care about is, is their net margin and the profitability that they contribute back to their owners or their shareholders. A not-for-profit company, in order to have tax-exempt status, to be exempt from, from paying taxes to the municipality, to the state, to the feds, there is a requirement that they provide a certain level of charitable service and that they give back to the community in different ways. So as a not-for-profit organization, Dave Kimball, we are, in order for us to be granted that status, we have to, number one, provide a level of transparency to, to the feds with regards to our operations. And in addition, we have to provide services in support of community needs. On a three-year basis, we have to file what is called a community health needs assessment. That is a very detailed, comprehensive assessment of the needs of the community. What are the prevailing health issues in association with that region? And then we have to provide a plan as to what we're doing organizationally, not charging to anyone, but what we're doing in service to mitigating some of those health risks. So case in point example, Dave Kimball, in its most recent community health needs plan, notes that there is a significant issue with transportation, healthcare access. That's something that we're working with the Northeast Connecticut Council of Governments on with regards to increasing bus routes, also increasing ridership opportunities. And transportation allows individuals to get to healthcare services so that they have the benefits of wellness opportunities that exist in our region. We also know that there is a significant need around behavioral health. We have an ongoing effort in behavioral health services, both inpatient and outpatient. And we have, have started some day programs recently that are targeted towards young people. Those are charitable. Those are at the organization's behest in order to, to provide that in fulfillment of our charitable mission. We also acknowledge that in our region, there is a significant rate of obesity and therefore a concurrent elevated rate of diabetes, all of which are significant health risks for other significant health concerns. Mitigating issues of obesity and reducing the rate of type one and type two and pre-diabetes reduces risk for other healthcare needs. So there is a lot of work that we do in partnership with the various food banks around providing nutritious food options as opposed to fast food options. Providing nutrition counseling, education with regards to exercise programs that reduce health risk. All of these things are done at no charge. And they are done in service to the community because it's part of our charitable mission in fulfillment of our tax-exempt, tax-exempt status. I don't know all of KB's requirements as a not-for-profit and as a tax-exempt organization, but I suspect that they have similar requirements around charitable care. I'm sure that they have similar requirements around community service and community benefit.
Oh, I, I think I get the picture. I just, so you're, it's an exchange, you get a tax break or a tax benefit for transparency and doing community things and it probably makes your bottom line lower because you're getting a tax break.
Correct.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, and then.
Did you have a third question that we didn't answer?
Yeah, just, do you think you're going to, so they said four hundred thousand dollars. Do you think the coverage, covering them in the meantime is going to come out less than that?
Yes.
Okay, cool.
Yeah, we do. And, you know, again, it's also part of the benefit of having a partner that you're working directly with side by side. You know, we'll, you know, we're, we're going to be just as much a part of their organization. They're going to be just as much a part of ours. And, you know, that's, that's a better level of collaboration and openness of dialogue.
Yeah, the transparency goes both ways, right? So if, you know, they're asking me about something that's related to how I can help them or, or like, like meeting with the case managers, meeting with the ED physicians, you know, that's the kind of thing that we will have ongoing if needed.
Ms. Wakefield was next and then after her, Mr. Whitehead.
So I just want to put it out there, and I had a conversation with Steve and I honestly, I think, that's Steve. Definitely. I think KB to expand out is a great, I think it's a great thing. You're a, you're a private business, you should be able to do that. My, my thing, my other thing too is unbillables. Having done medical billing, there are some things that you're never going to get paid for. There are labs, I used to do coding at the hospital, actually. And there are labs that doctors order that you're not going to get paid for. They're just, they order them and you have to suck it up.
So, so let me just, if, if I could just comment on, on the unbillables. So there are various contractual ways as we move forward with Dave Kimball where the last person that we look to for billing could be the hospital. So as we go down our list and that starts to bill and if anything's denied, we could potentially, and this is a partnership and we have to work this out as we do our contract, as we do our obligation, contractual obligations. We could essentially have the payer of last resort is Dave Kimball. So there are ways we can manage and protect KB as we start working through that agreement.
Oh, absolutely.
I'm not saying we're doing that, I'm not saying we're not. We haven't gotten that far. There's a lot of data to go through before we make those. But KB Ambulance is thinking about those things and understanding how we protect ourselves. And as, as our own business, we have to make those, those, those choices and think about those things. And we're doing that. And I just want to reiterate to the board here that our board takes those things very seriously, very seriously.
I, I, I know multiple members of your board, so, yeah, I understand. And I have, I want nothing but the best for KB Ambulance.
And I think the other thing we bring, that KB has a billing company right now. We actually are contracted with a new revenue cycle company that could help us too with looking at, why weren't we paid for that? Because as you know, sometimes you pick the wrong code, that's why you weren't paid. The problem is, do you take the time and really figure out what the right code was to get paid? Because it's going to take you an hour to figure it out at however much that is. And the reimbursement was, you know, twelve dollars and fifty cents.
I, you know, I, I, having, having worked at Westview and having it drilled into my head as a nurse, if you don't document it right, if ain't documented, Medicaid's not going to pay you. So ultimately, you know, it is a documentation, but sometimes the government just says.
Correct.
You're out of luck.
Well, it's a, it's a function, it's not just a function of it being documented, it's a function of documented with the right phraseology. And that's where it gets so complex. And with the introduction of ICD-10 a few years back, the, the level of detail that's required. You can't just say that a patient has heart failure. Now you have to say that a patient has acute or chronic heart failure with right-sided blah, blah, blah. And it's, and most physicians and nurses don't think that way normally. And as a consequence, it's a, it's a function of learning almost a foreign language as an adult, which we know is very hard. And as a result, having experts that really do focus on this on a regular basis, which, you know, again, we very intentionally contracted with a national expert revenue cycle company that has folks that stay current on this stuff every day. You know, John and I know enough to be dangerous about ICD, ICD-10 coding. And, and I will tell you, you know, I say that as somebody who wrote the coding guide for a number of the cardiology sub-disciplines back in the late nineties and at one time was considered one of the leading national experts in medical coding and reimbursement services for that discipline. I wouldn't even touch that today because it's evolved and changed so much. So that's why we contract with folks outside and we're going to provide that same level of access and availability to our colleagues at KB.
Education.
Mr. Whitehead, and then I have one question.
I mean, going back on the, the billing, since you guys are basically, you are in contract with them, so you're, you're taking direction from them. Wouldn't it be, wouldn't you be the end, end payer? If, if they didn't get reimbursed by the insurance company? Or would it be on their end that they're coding incorrectly? That's why they're not getting reimbursed? Because I think Chris had mentioned, sometimes the doctors, like you had mentioned, don't put the correct coding in so therefore they don't get, they don't get reimbursed. So that would be on, that would be on Dave Kimball's end, not so much on KB's end for not being reimbursed.
So, so the answer is maybe. And I know that that's not a clear answer, but I answer it that way because if we don't know that KB got denied and they don't share that with us, I don't know that my doctor wrote down the wrong thing. That's what we tried to get from AMR. That's what we know we will get from our colleagues at KB, is that level of transparency. Hey, this week we got four denials, here they are. It's a lot easier to work four denials than somebody coming to you and say, hey, the last five years, we didn't get reimbursed for these four hundred and seventy-two cases. That point is too late. Number one, with Medicare, you've got an eighteen-month lag to be able to correct something that was wrong. With Medicaid, it's a shorter window. And if we're not getting that information timely, we can't intervene on it and fix it. So that's why we want to have the discussions and from the outset, when, when Steve and Scott and John, Dr. Wexler and I sat down and started talking about this relationship, we said, one of the things that we want to commit to is at a minimum monthly meetings where we're reviewing these things. Ideally, in the first number of months, it may be every other week. It could be weekly. But what we're committed to is making sure that we've got that bidirectional information exchange so that there are things that are occurring, we can head them off before they become trends. Because if we allow them to become trends, they become problems. And we don't want that to happen. So again, it's about how you structure. So again, it's about how you structure the relationship, it's about how you create the, the business practices on, from the outset, and we've got the opportunity to do it the right way, and it's a, it's a, it's a process that I've seen work in other practices that I've worked with across the country, that if you have that level of bidirectional exchange and you're intervening early, you can actually make change and prevent things from happening again, because you've intervened in a timely enough manner where people understand. So, you know, we're committed to that level of discipline, and again, you know, we, we know that there's bumps. I mean, you're never going to get it all right, but I think by virtue of being transparent and engaged and having the level of openness of dialogue that we've had thus far, that we'll continue to have going forward, I think we're going to prevent a lot of those issues from occurring because we're on top of it. And that's something that we were never given the opportunity to do with AMR.
So that's a yes?
Yes.
We'll go with yes.
But, but the other thing is, a denial is not the end of the road. You can fight a denial, you have to take the time to fight the denial. And so for many years, organizations have said, okay, which I kind of said before, if it's going to take me three hours at $20 an hour to fight a $10 claim, I'm not doing it. Right? And the insurance companies want you to do that. So one of the things that, the other thing that Ensemble, who is our national revenue cycle company, we actually have two documentation specialists embedded in the hospital. So they can help us with that specific language that we may need, but that would come from KB's billing department to say, this wasn't worded correctly. I can go to them and say, can you help us with this?
Yeah.
But it should be, it should, so the whole responsibility thing, it would be, it really shouldn't be on KB to have their, to have your billing and your documentation correct, right? That should be...
The way that it works, because we don't provide the service, KB's going to, the license that they're going to get, that gives them the right to bill. Day Kimball can't bill for a service that KB serviced.
I understand that, but the information coming from your hospital gives them the ability to bill.
Correct.
So if you have bad information...
Correct.
They have...
But I can't fix that information if I don't know that it's bad. That's what we're trying to say.
I understand that, that's why the whole, yes, yes, yes. If they come back and your doctors give them a bogus code, and they don't get paid, and the insurance company denies it, and continually denies it because they're an insurance company, you guys will pick up the...
Well, I would, I would, I would clarify the statement, we, our doctors never provide a bogus code. That's not an appropriate word to use with regards to billing services, just because that puts us in a really bad position on a lot of levels. So let's, let's not use bogus. If they provide us with a less-than-complete set of information, or they don't get to the level of specificity that warrants the approval, I think that's a better way to put it.
Construction hospital.
Sorry. I was starting to have a few palpitations, thank God we have these guys here because...
But the physicians document it, somebody else actually codes it, and somebody else actually bills it, and it's really not the coder or the biller that's responsible, like their billing company, but the transparency is, I would hope that they would get back to us and say, Steve, talk to O'Keefe about X, Y, and Z, because this ain't right. And then we'll work to make it, like, number one, physicians don't only document on the run sheet. I'm calling it a run sheet, I know that's not right. But they also document what's called their discharge summary. So everything that happens in a hospital, when somebody gets discharged, a physician is supposed to dictate the entire stay, everything that happened, every little detail, with all the diagnoses at the end, which is supposed to be, you know, to the specificity that Kyle was talking about, that's how you fight a denial, is when you get that discharge summary, I can use that to fight a denial, because there's a lot of specificity in it. And they have been physicians, it doesn't matter where they work, if they work in a hospital, they have been trained by documentation specialists to make sure they're using the right terminology, and they're not, you know, they, like, for instance, the terminology they're using, because the insurance company's going to show me that x-ray, I want to see that. The x-ray says this, the, right, the diagnosis says this, so they match. And then people like that, that code, take that information and put it into a national code, it's like a dictionary of codes, so that regardless of somebody gets admitted to a hospital here or someplace else, it's the same code, which means the same diagnosis, which gives the same rate. Very complicated.
Now, now I've got a question. You talked about some, some things where it may only be $10 that got declined. Now, if it was that same thing that got declined on 3,900 calls in a year, that $10 all of a sudden is now $40,000. Do you have a way of tracking things like that to see if there's a trend in certain things you're not getting paid for repeatedly?
The hospital does. We're expecting to do the same thing with, although you don't charge anything that's $10. No, but we would expect that level of information out of KB, and quite honestly, like, let's say they, they made 42 runs, and let's say they were, they could charge for all of those 42. So let's say at the end of January, their billing company charged all of them, which I would be very surprised about because it takes time, right? But let's say they did that. They're not going to hear from some of those insurance companies for 90 days, but they might find from a couple of them that they got a denial on the 15th of February that happened, that run rate, the run was on the 15th of January. I would like to know as soon as they know about the denial.
Yeah.
So we're going to have to have, this has to come from KB, communication with their billing company, and I'm assuming it's a coding and billing company, right? And then we'll have those conversations. Now, the other thing that the billing company might be able to do is, they might be able to give us a denial report that would classify them in certain ways so that we, you know, we work on each denial to see if we can fix it, but then she might have a trending software that we might be able to check out. But these are all things we've got to work on.
Yeah.
The company that we use has people that specifically do that kind of stuff, but in a hospital, we bill for, I don't know, seems like trillions of things, quite honestly. So it's kind of hard to, like, you know, in all of my departments, I can find out the denial rate in any of those, but a lot of times, I'll find out a case was denied, and we look at that case, and we figure out what was denied. Most of the time, not everything was denied, just something was denied. And of course, it's the most expensive something that we don't want to be denied, right? So...
Well, I think as John, as, your question is, is a really great one in the sense that, you know, if something, if a $10 item is denied and it's a one-time occurrence, who cares? You know, I mean, you know, we, we spend, you know, $10 on a cup of coffee and don't think anything of it. That's not, that's not a big deal. Well, I don't, but you know, some people do, and you get the half-caf, you know, soy mountain latte, whatever, I don't even know what that stuff is, but you know, if, if one time it occurs and it's $10, that's interesting, but it's not something that we're going to spend a lot of effort on. But your point about if it happens 400 times, that's now a trend, and that's something that we've got to look into, and, and together we'll do that, you know. Those are the kinds of things that, that in my position, I'm very interested in looking at. If we've got something that's repetitively occurring, I want to understand why is it occurring, and what can we do to mitigate it from occurring again, because that's, that's an issue. Clearly, something is going awry in that system. You know, those are again, you know, systems, systems dynamics that, that we can work on. But if it never rises to the level where you're even discussing it, because you're not having those types of meetings where there's, where you're invoking that transparency, you don't even know that you've got a trend to address. And that's, you know, again, it's one of the fundamental things that we started with when we first sat down with, with Scott and with Steve, that, you know, if we're going to do this, we want to do it the right way, and we want to invite and, and actually even insist upon that level of transparency, because we're going to invest in this as well, and we want to be good partners for you, just as you want to be good partners for us. And that's important to us, and you know, I'll, it's getting late, and I'll, I'll close with this, you know, again, you know, I, I find it, you know, interesting that I'm standing at this podium where Margaret Mead's quote is, is, is on the, on the podium, you know. This is a small group of people that are trying to make real change for Northeast Connecticut, and we're proud to be a part of that small group, you know. We know that there is work to be done, we know that it's important to this region, we know that 911 access is your most important priority, it's ours too. And I will be very clear about that, because those patients who are in need of emergent care very likely are also coming to Day Kimball. So that's an important service to us as well, and we will never allow Steve and Scott and their team to prioritize a transport over a 911 call. Because again, you know, we, we need only look back to, you know, what happened in Cincinnati, or what happened just, you know, a few months ago with the employee that, you know, that works at Day Kimball, who by the grace of God was able to visit us a couple of weeks ago at the hospital. She's got a long road ahead of her, but because this guy, sitting right here, was the one that was on that ambulance, she was able to come back and visit her friends and colleagues at Day Kimball. So we will never, ever underestimate the value and the importance of 911 service, because that's, that's a critical thing, and you hope you never need it, but when you do, you need it, and you need it in a hurry, and you don't want there to be delays. So that will always be our priority as well. And again, thank you for the opportunity to speak with you this evening, and I know this is a big decision for you from a support standpoint. We think it's the right thing to do, obviously, that's why we're speaking so passionately about it. We think this is a great partnership, and we're excited to work with these guys. So thank you again.
I've got one last thing for you. Due to the fact that you're looking at your acquisition, being acquired, or the transition with Covenant coming in, what is Covenant's business model at their other hospitals? I, I've done some questions, I've got some answers, but I want to hear it from you. As far as transport services, are they, do they have their own transport services at any of their hospitals?
They do.
Or, okay, so it's all outsourced to other providers?
Yeah. So Covenant, Covenant's comprised of three other hospitals, they are also a not-for-profit system. All of their hospitals are similar size to ours, you know, the largest of which is about 180 beds, that's in Nashua, and then they have a hospital in Bangor, they have a hospital in Lewiston, Maine, about the same size as ours, providing the same type of community-based services. They are not tertiary or quaternary in nature, they are not Level 1, 2, or 3 trauma centers, and as a consequence, they do not have their own ambulance services, nor do they have owned transport capabilities. They rely upon partnership models just like this.
Okay.
And they are, I've had direct discussions with the chief executive officer from Covenant, they are very supportive of our forging this relationship. They very much believe in community-based partnerships, and feel that our partnering with a local ambulance company is a stronger solution than partnering with a national company.
Okay, thank you.
So they're committed to the relationship as well.
Thank you. Anything else? Mr. White?
Again, I'd be remiss if I didn't say the little spiel I have to say every single time I ask questions to either, to more so for KB than anything. Obviously, I'm a per diem employee of KB Ambulance, however, after discussions with our town attorney, that there's no conflict of interest because the mutual partnership between Day Kimball and KB gives me no financial benefit. On top of that, I have no non-disclosure agreements with KB, so anything I say is of my own volition, if you will, and not a violation of any of that. So some questions I do have, and some of it's follow-up. I know a couple of weeks ago, I believe it was Ms. George who had asked about the overtime at KB. Are you able to answer that question?
I don't remember the specific question.
I wanted to know a rough estimate of either monthly or yearly what you're paying for overtime, because that speaks volumes to what your available service is taking on this new entity. You don't know how much overtime you paid last year?
Not specifically right now.
But we asked two weeks ago. So you're not going to provide it, basically?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, and correct me if I'm wrong, I'm trying to understand, to make sure I get this right. So, Day Kimball, this is for you guys here, you were, you're willing to help them with their startup costs there, from what I'm understanding, help them secure vents there, and I'm talking to financial help here too. Events, possibly an ambulance, things like that, is that correct? And like, what extent, I guess?
So our, our commitment is to, is to assist with the startup cost, because we believe that the, the short-term investment provides a long-term gain for the community and ultimately creates a stronger service. So, you know, while, you know, there may be some level of involvement from Day Kimball from a financial standpoint initially, we think that long-term, it's, it's a better partnership model, so as a consequence, we're willing to support that. You know, and we believe, having discussed this intensively with our colleagues, that KB has a, a business model and a business construct that, you know, number one, we've reviewed, and, and again, Dr. Wexler, who's not here this evening, has national experience in emergency medicine and working with EMS services across the country. Collectively, we believe that KB's model will give us the ability to do this more efficiently and more cost-effectively.
Okay. As to experience on transfers, when it comes to the staffing, I would honestly say it was probably less than 10% of the staff. The paramedics probably have far more, however, your EMT staff, there's few and far between that have experience doing transfers, having been there. Have you, so I guess, you know, being the, I can, I can be the bad guy sometimes, too. What have, what has your staff, both, for both ends, I guess, well, more so KB than Day Kimball, where has your staff felt about this entire endeavor?
So I, I think that we made it pretty clear the first time around that, you know, a lot of people come to EMS to do 911s, and obviously, there are a portion of the staff that sticks to that. But they have been very supportive of, of this endeavor, they believe that it's the right thing for KB to get into. I think, I think everything, single one of them think that the, the timeframe is probably one of the hardest things to do for what we're doing, but they believe in the end that, that as we do here, that that is the right thing for KB to do. And I'm going to be pretty honest that, you know, I, I didn't come to KB Ambulance to do a transfer service, right? I, to do to a transporter agency. I came here to help build a paramedic system in the Northeast corner, because I knew there, there was a need there, and I, I saw that KB Ambulance was a, a strong, strongly built company in the area that could do that service, and they were moving forward with that, and I came on board to do that. I would have never imagined bringing KB Ambulance into a transport agency as myself. That, that's not something that, that was never a goal of mine, right? However, I understand that it is a, an opportunity for KB to expand its services, to build its team, to, to build the equipment, expand with our equipment and our services, and continue to provide services to the Northeast corner. I know that that expands outside of Killingley, as we started to do when we took on the paramedic service, and then as, as other towns around us start to lose their, their ambulance services as a strong agency in the area, we are one of the first ones that they come to, to ask questions and, and see what we can do. And I think that if we don't grow, we will eventually fall. And that's how I feel about it, and that's why I continue to, to go with this endeavor, and, and I firmly believe that's where KB needs to go, to stay a, a strong agency and, you know, across the nation, across the state, agencies are collapsing and full, and combining, and it's either somebody else takes us over, like Hartford Healthcare, or we build our strong, ourselves up strong enough to stay supportive of ourselves. Because in all reality, the, you know, it's either the towns get together, as Nikon did, and provide the, the paramedic-type program, or, and that's across the towns, not just here in the Northeast corner, but across the state, or a corporate agency comes in and runs those programs, and that's where it goes. So we either, we either build it up ourselves and, and make ourselves that agency that can stay here, or... can stay here, or, or we fall.
I, I'll speak for the hospital. I think that, you know, can I tell you that this is, this transition has been, you know, they're not running around with pom-poms, let's put it that way. But I think, the truth be told, specifically, the ED knows what an asset KB is. And, you know, as you know, being an EMT, you get a relationship with the ED staff, right? So, this is a big change. Part of the family's missing, and so there's a little bit of mourning going on, I would say. But on the same token, watching, and, not that I wanted to, but I spent most of New Year's, the Monday after New Year's, in the ED myself with a family member, and watching Amber and the EMTs and paramedics from KB taking multiple patients out of the ED, also running upstairs, transferring people out of the hospital. I think ambulance service in Manchester was down there, and there was another truck down there that I didn't recognize. I have no idea who they were, quite honestly. But, it's getting better, quite honestly. And I've been, you know, educating the staff, because just like you have a lot of questions about AMR, as do the staff, and I've been very clear with them. You know, this was not a decision anybody made that we wanted AMR to leave. They left because they didn't, we didn't meet, Northeastern Connecticut didn't meet their business model. That's what I'm telling people. I'm not necessarily telling the money that they were looking for, I'm just saying it didn't meet the business model that they were looking for. And KB's a good partner, because just like us, they're a not-for-profit organization, it's been around, I said 100 years, I guess I was wrong, it's only 70-some-odd years, but, you know, they've been around for a very long time, and, and we've worked together forever and a day, and will continue to work together forever and a day, quite honestly, right? Because if, if this doesn't work, and we have to go on to another ambulance service, we want KB to stay as KB. I really didn't, you know, I guess it's interesting how you feel like if we don't grow, you know, you die kind of thing, so that's an interesting point, so.
Yeah, I think there's another piece that, that goes along with the, you know, some of the questions that arise, you know, from within the hospital and elsewhere, too. This is a time of year when hospitals typically get busier. You know, we're seeing elevated amounts of flu, we're seeing elevated amounts of RSV. As much as we would love for, never to give another report on how many COVID patients we have in the house, it's, it's back, and we're in a high-transmission region. So, we're busier in the hospital as well. The level of acuity that we have is much higher than, you know, than it typically is. So, as a consequence, we're, we're dealing with a lot more patients at the same time, we're dealing with a lot more sick patients at the same time. And when somebody needs to move, you know, it, it causes, like, oh, we have to wait. Well, you know, there's, there's a reality to, to things, and I've said this often when talking specifically to physician audiences, but I'll, I'll share it with you tonight. You know, people don't mind change, they just don't want to be changed. And when you have to do something different, it's hard. You know, it is hard. And we don't, we don't dismiss that in the least, which is why John was here as much as he was over the New Year's weekend. We had a lot of folks preparing our staff for this transition the week leading up to January 1. There's a lot of ongoing discussion on a daily basis with our emergency department attending physicians, with the nursing leads, with our URPCTs, you know, this isn't something that we communicate once, we communicate every day, multiple times per day about this. And, and again, it will, it will ultimately smooth out, and, and it will be better. And I will tell you, every day, it's getting better. I talked with, you know, I, I got a phone call from WINY, and they asked how things are going. I said, "Every day's better than the day before." You know, we're, we're growing together, we're learning together, and we're making improvements together. But the key is that we're doing it together, and we're doing it as a partnership to better serve Northeast Connecticut. And, and again, I think that's what this is all about. So, you know, you're right, you know, there's, there's always going to be that level of question, there's always going to be that level of concern, but the reality is, that's, that's what happens every day in life.
And I wouldn't disagree with your comments there. I've talked to staff from both the hospital and from KB, and I have a pretty good feel of where they all feel, at this point, even a nurse today expressed some concern to me about the, about everything going on. And of course, transition is, is not, change isn't always liked, change is inevitable, not always liked, we'll be honest about that, right?
But I, I do want to point out, though, I did have the chance of spending a couple hours in KB last week with Steve Wexler, and we invited, I believe, every team member, correct?
Right.
And I, I can't, I know that not everybody was there, because some people called out on a call, and I'm sure some of the Perdiums weren't there, but I felt excitement in the room. I did not feel one person say anything negative. And in fact, the folks, there was a couple of folks, and one of them, I believe, is a helicopter paramedic, right? Who was, thinks this is the right thing for Northeastern Connecticut to do. He was asking Dr. Wexler a bunch of questions about certain pieces of equipment. We're working right now, we've already secured the ventilator, it should be here any minute, any minute, literally. And today, I placed the order for the transport IV pumps. Now, what, we don't know who, right now, Dick Kimball's paying for them, but we don't know how that's going to pan out over time. We haven't really sat and talked about it. We know the equipment's necessary, and I can get them at a better price, or Dick Kimball can get them at a better price than KB can. So, I want you to know, that level of commitment is already there.
And let me also add that, you know, a lot of the staff that you may talk to in the emergency department could be travelers that are coming here from elsewhere.
This was a traveler, though.
Well, but I'm, it could be. And, you know, those travel folks aren't as invested in Northeastern Connecticut as we are.
And I understand.
They're here, they're here for a job, and they're getting paid very handsomely for it.
Oh, I very much understand that. My next question, actually, this goes to the town manager. Do, does the Town of Killingly have a contract with KB Ambulance, or has this been more of a gentleman's agreement since 1939?
So, we, I, I'd have to go back in the files, I believe that the town formally designated KB at some point for PSA, but I don't believe that there's a formal contract, per se. We do have a contract with NICOG for the paramedic intercept service, there's a formal contract for that service. But I think that we, years ago, and I'd have to go back and look through the documents from years ago, that there was, the council, the town would have done formal action to assign the P, the PSA to KB Ambulance.
So, my concern still comes back to some comments I made a couple weeks ago, when this first came before the, well, everybody came before the council. Eventually, there, there'll be contracts in place, and there'll be consequences if those contracts are not fulfilled. And the concern I still have revolves around our 911 service. And I, I know you've done as much as you can to really try to alleviate that, but the end of the day, a contract's a contract. You're, you're going to have to prioritize that contract. And, to be honest, I know, Mr. Kramer, you didn't appreciate Ms. Wakefield's comments, and that's, you're right to not appreciate them. But when you came, when Dick Kimball came before us two weeks ago, it was literally a, this is AMR that did this to us, and this is their fault, and it was a chronic blame for them. I feel like there's still a lack of transparency between all organizations. I'm not putting blame on any single one, but I feel like there's a lot more questions that need to be asked and answered. I'm not here to vote on nice, nice-sounding bills. We see that in Hartford, we see that in Washington, and it ends up hurting the people in the end. I want to make sure that my people in the Town of Killingly are chronically taken care of, making sure that that 911 ambulance is always available, 100% of the time. That we're not, as taxpayers, not being, the burden's not for us to pay for KB to take and do transfers out of Dick Kimball, because that's not the contract that we should be having. That's where I come in as the bad guy to say, I just, I have a lot more concerns that I don't feel are entirely being addressed.
Thank you.
And that's, that was why, okay, so you look at this, this is a startup business. A startup business needs an infusion in cash, most of the time. You're going to be hiring 12 to 13 people. You're going to have to dedicate an ambulance to Dick Kimball 24/7. AMR also had a 12-hour ambulance, so you're probably going to have, so that's more wear and tear on your equipment. That's more pay to your people. You're a not-for-profit right now, correct? Okay. You come to this town at budget time to supplement your, your, whoops, sorry. Correct. Am I wrong?
Yes.
So, what's to ensure that the Town of Killingly and your other three municipalities are not supplementing this startup? Right off, but you're not willing to tell me, staff-wise, how much overtime you've paid over the past year, yet you're going to come to us in a few months for money. So, do you see where I have an issue?
So, there's a challenge around showing you overtime? We're going to be covered Thompson for six months on all of, those numbers won't be valuable to you, but they're going to tell you one story.
I'm talking about Killingly.
So, sorry.
If you can break it down by municipality, we're the highest capacity, I understand.
Correct.
The question is, do they have the capacity?
Do you, do you have the personnel to do this?
Today? No.
Right, but, but you're doing this on a month-to-month.
Correct.
And in order to hire those people, you need some money.
Sure. Absolutely.
Now, Dick Kimball just-
And we've got an arrangement with Dick Kimball to make that work.
On a month-to-month.
Correct.
But Dick Kimball's, they're not being clear with us on the infusion of money for this startup. He's talking long-term.
Well, so, so I have, so I have, I understand that, you know, if we were talking about a contract between Dick Kimball and Killingly, we would get into much more detail, but this is a contract between Dick, Dick Kimball and KB. So, so I'm, I'm a little, I'm a little uneasy, at least, to, to blurt out numbers and, and to do too much, when it's negotiation between an organization that's separate. So, I just want to be very cautious when I answer those questions. And, and I also, you know, I can look up P and L and tell you an overtime number, but it doesn't tell you all, it doesn't tell you the rights, it doesn't tell you the story. It tells you a story, but not the story, right? Because there's so much, if I've learned anything in the, I don't even know, Steve, it's a blur, nine months, 12 months, 14 months, however long I've been here with KB, I have learned that this organization, and the billing, and the staff, and the scheduling, is so much more complicated than I ever thought it was. And to, to, to speak to a number that's just a number is very, it, it's not correct. It's very dangerous.
But you're going to have a number when you come before us, what you expect the taxpayers to pick up in a few months.
Absolutely, and we've been preparing that.
That's what I want to ballpark.
Yeah, and we've been preparing that for two months, and we have some, some time set with Mary to go over those numbers. The Killingly numbers. And we do the same thing with Palmford, Eastern Hampton numbers. We do the same thing with NICOG, we have each of those business units broken out.
I just want to ensure that we're not covering this startup.
Absolutely, and I wouldn't expect you to.
So, how are you keeping the books separate? How are you?
So, we're developing-
And how do you keep your tax-exempt status? I was curious about that.
We're developing that separateness, right? So, so, I would say, historically, that separateness of the separate contracts was not readily available. We're developing that in, partly in this year's budget that we're operating under now, and much more preparing for next year's budget. So, that's separate, we are building that separation, so that we can give you details.
Yeah, that's very-
Absolutely. I understand what you want and what you're asking, I just don't have it to give you in the right form that will give you the right information.
This is for Mary. Is it procedurally possible to renew our PSA with KBA, if there was one?
So, once we've designated our PSA to KB Ambulance, there's actually a statutory process that we would have to go to, to revoke it, and designate it to a different agency. So, there is an entire process you have to go through to identify that they're deficient in providing that service, to articulate that, and identify a different provider.
And in follow-up, I guess I don't quite understand what, what the agreement was, and is it enforceable? Like, that's raised concern that we don't have a contract.
So, it's an, it's an assignment of a, of our service providing, of the, providing the ambulance service. Killingly's legally responsible to provide ambulance service. We assigned KB Ambulance as that service provider for Killingly. So, we designated KB Ambulance as our service provider. So, it's not necessarily a contract. We notify, we, the town would have voted on designating KB Ambulance as the service provider, we would have notified the state of that designation, and the state maintains that KB is our service, holds that service provide, that PSA for the Town of Killingly. In order for Killingly to make that change, there is statutorily procedures that you have to follow to make, to modify or change that.
Now, I, I do think that it probably makes sense for KB and Killingly to start to develop a, a future contract. I don't think there's, there's any issue with doing that. And again, to Mary's point, there probably is something, I don't, I haven't seen it.
I don't know.
It's, I'm sure there was some contractual language. One of the challenges around that language is, you know, it, it may have, and I'm, I'm going to speak in generalities, right? It may have said, "KB will provide emergency services." It could have been a paragraph-long, right? And as, as we know, that's probably not enough to, to explain what we're responsible for. So, obviously, with the change in volunteerism, you know, the, the fact that, you know, we probably provided one ambulance at the beginning of this, whatever, way back, you know, in the 50s, we probably provided one ambulance, and it was all volunteer, and as volunteers were prevalent, we, we got another ambulance, and, and without the volunteering, without the volunteerism, now we have paid crews, right? So, the reimbursement and the function and how we pay those crews, what does Killingly want to provide to its citizens? Do you want to provide one ambulance, two, three, four, five? That all costs way more than it cost when, when, you know, payroll was essentially free. So, to have that contractual conversation, I think, is, is valid. We have a lot of data, we're going to bring that data, you know, when we sit down with, with, with Mary, and whoever, however you guys want to do it, if it's committee, whatever, we're going to bring that data, we're going to show call volume, you know, we're going to talk about, look, this is what you have today, this is what we staff, this is what you pay for, this, this is potentially the increases from inflation and payroll, and then, do you want to provide more services? Do we need separate services overnight? Is, is what we're providing enough? And what is the cost of providing more? There's some complicated conversations that are going to come up when it comes to KB, and we have to have them. And, and at some point, you know, the, based on the financial ramifications, we're going to have, you know, I always say it's a stair-step. If you've got exactly the right amount of ambulances for exactly the right amount of patients, you come out pretty even. It's that one extra patient where there's no ambulance. Do you want to pay for a whole ambulance for the one more patient for the year? No, that doesn't make sense. That's why we use mutual aid, right? We, we balance the region, and we help each other. So, if Brooklyn can't pick up a call, because they're busy at that moment, KB helps Brooklyn, and Brooklyn helps, helps Killingly. So, we try to make it work, but in that stair-step, there are times when you go over the stair-step, and now you've got 500 patients extra. Well, you, now you need another ambulance. But I need 1,000 to pay for the ambulance. But I only have 500. What are we going to do? That's where we come to the board and we say, you know, for, for the next 500, we have to supplement, because it's not going to work. And we have to pay our people, and that's a huge change. So, this is a way where if we can work with Dick Kimball, and not have you fund them, but if we can come to an agreement where we're less expensive than their alternatives, and we can have some negotiation, maybe they help fund you. And, and that's not the goal, to fund one way or the other, but it's how do we have, you know, if I have an extra ambulance, you have to pay for that entire extra ambulance. Well, so, so if I have two, if, and I'm going to speak in hypotheticals, if I have two ambulances dedicated to them, and two ambulances dedicated to you, and I have a spare truck for breakdowns, I can share that between the two organizations. So, now that spare ambulance costs each of you half. That's way oversimplified, but we have management staff and building staff, right? So, if Steve's salary is split four ways instead of three ways, it's benefit to all the organizations. So, again, very simple, but that's what we're trying to do. This is a fourth revenue stream, that we can take some of the overhead and bring the overhead down, and provide better, better care, we have some extra capabilities, and we, and we don't have to charge, you know, a very small organization charges a lot of overhead to one organization. So, that's the goal. We have some learning, we have a couple of months of gathering data, which is what we're going to do. We're going to gather that data, we're going to analyze it, we're going to go through it, and then as time goes, we're going to adjust it, just like we're going to come and sit down with you guys and so, and show, look, this is our costs. We, we didn't, you know, we didn't cause it. We didn't, you know, we didn't cause it, it's the way it is." Just like you guys are dealing with roads and trucks and police and everything else. You know, unfortunately, at the end of the day, it's a service to the public, and I'm not a big crazy tax person, but, you know, do we all want to take care of our neighbor from an EMS standpoint? You know, like Ray, like you said, there's certain things that we need to do that. So, we'll be transparent with you guys, we'll get you that data. Again, we've been working on it for a couple of months, we had this small project that kind of held up our budgeting, but we used a lot of that data, you know, the fact that we could turn around in a week and get them some hard numbers to make some agreements was because we were in that budget cycle already. We were already in our budget cycle. So, I hope that helps answer some of the questions and explain some of the complexity, and glad to speak further if we need to.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything further? I just want to end this with one thing. I know there's been a lot of talk of how and why we've ended up where we are. I think as a council, as a town, as a community, sometimes it's more important to look to the future and to where we're going and how do we get there. We're here now. Right now, there's a need in the community for transport, and KB's looking to step up to the plate. It's a matter of whether the council is willing to support them getting their license to do so or not. And I know there was no motion and no second, so at this point, if anyone would like to make a motion or a second, if not, we'll move on in the agenda. It was tabled, it will continue to be tabled, I believe, for one or two more months.
One more meeting. If it doesn't come off the table after your next meeting, it comes off.
Seeing no motion and no second, I want to thank everyone who came here tonight. We appreciate the time you've given us and all the information you've given us. So, we will move on in the agenda. Next item up is new business, and we have none. I will entertain a motion to move to item 17 ahead of item 16 due to we've had some people who have been waiting a very long time for us.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Motion has been made by Mr. Grandelsky, seconded by Mr. Wood. Any discussion? Seeing none, will all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. We'll now move on to item 17, which is executive session. We are going to go into executive session, including the town council, the town manager.
I would also request that you include Jim Wheeler and Jocelyn from Sansousi Associates.
Okay. Also including Jim Wheeler and Jocelyn from Sansousi Associates.
And Jen Hawkins, our finance director.
Jen Hawkins, our finance director. And, excuse me, your name?
Mike Collins, our attorney. I'm sorry, I thought you already said our attorney, that's why I didn't say it.
No, I had, and our attorney as well. So, we're...
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
Motion made by Ms. George, seconded by Mr. Wood. All those in discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? We are moving into executive session.